All right, welcome everyone. Today is Monday, June 8th, 2020, and it's 6:00 PM. Barbara, take it away.
Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during the state of emergency. Adequate notice of the meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Crescent City of Asbury Park website. A copy of the notices is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines for virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note that all microphones of public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during that time only, please use the raise hand button on Zoom if on a computer or dial *9 if on a telephone. Your name or last nine digits of the phone number will be called when it's your turn to speak. If at any time during your question you are deemed to be out of line or topic, we reserve the right to mute your microphone and we'll make an announcement that this has occurred. During the public comment session only, the public will have three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting. Please identify yourself before you speak at all times. And this meeting is being recorded and will be available via AP-TV. Please join me in the salute of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the republic of its citizens.
Okay, and I will take roll call now. Mayor John Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Jim Henry? Jennifer Sauter?
Here.
Trudy Seifax? Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Eric Gallapo?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Here.
And Barbara Krasak?
Here.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting on May 18th, 2020. It was a regular meeting. Does anybody have any concerns, the board members have any concerns about those minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Mike Manzella.
Second, Yvonne Clayton.
Okay, and I just wanted to, this is Irene, I just want to point out that those minutes are marked into exhibit as B1 as shown on the screen. And I have a motion by Mike Manzella and a second by Yvonne Clayton. And everyone in attendance is eligible, all in favor?
Says members recuse, Barbara. Was Barbara recused from that meeting?
No, just the application.
All right. Barbara, did you come back on board after the application and re-chair the meeting?
I did not.
Okay, why don't you recuse yourself on these? Since the majority of what went on is probably the application that you were recused from.
Okay.
So you mean future meetings that I have to refuse myself, Rick should start the meeting?
No, no, you can start the meeting now, but you can't vote on the adoption of the minutes for the meeting because you were recused.
That's fine.
So you won't be in attendance.
That's fine.
All right, so everyone eligible to vote except for Barbara Krasak and Trudy Seifax, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, minutes memorialized.
Okay, we have an application that's on the table for the two applications, one for AP Triangle that were carried from May 18th, one for the subdivision, and then one for the actual site plan. At this time, I'm going to recuse myself because I'm within a 200-foot radius. And I'm going to turn over the meeting to Rick Lambert as the acting chair during this meeting.
Hi, this is Rick Lambert. So I believe we concluded the first portion of the application at the previous meeting. And so this meeting will be the application for preliminary and final major site plan for the 48-unit townhouse project founded by Cookman Avenue, Asbury Avenue, and Heck Street, blocks 3203, lots 1 through 19, block 3206, lots 1 through 4, block 801, Lot 1, waterfront redevelopment area zone. And so now leaving it up to the applicant's attorney.
Hold on, you mentioned it's a site plan, it's also the subdivision. There's two applications pending?
Well, we, and also the subdivision, we concluded with the subdivision, we just haven't voted on it yet, but we concluded with all the presentations and probably at the previous meeting.
Okay, that's the case, sure, okay. Before Jennifer takes over, I'd like to swear in our staff, two engineers and Donna Miller, please. Please raise your right hands. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your names for the record and your positions with the board.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jason Fitcher, board engineer.
Is Doug in on this?
Yes, Doug Cleland, board engineer.
Did you take the oath, did you swear to it when I did it?
I said I do, yes.
Okay, so then state your name for the record, please.
Doug Cleland, board engineer.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Question. Donna Miller has a question.
Sure.
So my notes, I think, were that Keenan had provided the planning proofs on the subdivision, but I don't believe it was open for public comment. Are they combining public comment on the?
Yes, the plan was to allow public comment at the end of the meeting for both portions of the application.
Jen Porter, are you in agreement with that?
I am.
Okay, then everybody's on board, okay.
Okay, Jennifer, would you like to begin?
Yes. Good evening, board members, consultants, and members of the public. Again, my name is Jennifer Porter, I'm the attorney for the applicant AP Triangle LLC. We previously appeared, as indicated, on May 18th, at which time we gave testimony on the subdivision aspect of the application for a major subdivision. And testimony was presented by both our site engineer as well as our planner in support of the proofs for the bulk variances associated with that subdivision approval. Tonight's testimony will be centered upon the site plan aspect of our proposal. Pursuant to Mr. Serpico's request at the last meeting on May 18th, we have submitted all of the relevant pages from the subsequent developer agreement, which included all references not only to the public open space parcel, which had been previously marked as Exhibit A12, but now we've pulled into that exhibit additional pages from the subsequent developer agreement that reference the project timeline, construction sequencing, and all aspects of construction of the proposed project. And there will be testimony provided by our site engineer this evening specific to the sequencing of construction, the project timeline, and those various issues. In addition, we received a letter from the Wesley Lake Commission that was submitted to us by the Board Secretary. That letter was received by us on May 26th of 2020. We had responded by letter indicating that stormwater in the waterfront redevelopment area is expressly regulated by and under the jurisdiction of the New Jersey DEP pursuant to a CAFRA permit that was issued in March of 2004. However, notwithstanding this, our site engineer is fully prepared this evening to provide testimony and discuss this with the board's engineer as well regarding all stormwater issues affecting the site and can answer any questions from the board, its consultants, or the public concerning stormwater at that time. So for tonight, we intend to call four witnesses in connection with the site plan testimony. First, we will have Frank Minervini of NVMK Architecture and Design, our architect, to discuss the overall architecture of the site and its relationship to the surrounding buildings within the waterfront redevelopment area. Second, we will have Sean Delaney from Bowman Consulting, our civil engineer, run through all aspects of the proposed site plan. Next, we will have Brian Laff from BML Studio, our landscape architect, run through the specifics of our landscaping plan and all of the changes that have been made and implemented to that plan since meeting originally with the TRC back in July of last year. And finally, we will have Keenan Hughes, our planner, who will discuss our compliance with the requirements of the waterfront redevelopment plan as well as the proofs associated with some of the design exceptions and other relief that we're seeking in connection with our applications. Unless the board has any questions for me, I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Minervini.
I have no questions.
Okay. Does the board require that we qualify, Mr. Minervini? I'm happy to do so.
He's testified, Jack Serpico here, he's testified before us on prior applications, correct?
Yes.
It's the board's call, I'll swear him in, I'll have him state his licensure, and then if the board's satisfied with his prior expert testimony, want to waive voir dire of his credentials, that's fine.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, Frank, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you, please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your association with the applicant, please.
Frank Minervini, M-I-N-E-R-V-I-N-I. I am a principal of NVMK Architecture, we are the architects for this project.
Thank you. Jennifer, you're on.
Great, Mr. Minervini, can you please state your educational and professional background for the board?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Architecture degree from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 1992. I have appeared in front of more than 30 municipalities and been accepted as an expert in architecture, both planning and zoning boards. I am a member of the American Institute of Architects, and I'm thinking the last time I was in front of this particular board would have been for the Asbury Beer Garden.
Okay, we moved that the board accepted him as an expert in the field of architecture?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Minervini, did you prepare, are you familiar with the architectural plans that were submitted to the board in connection with this application, which are all or have all been marked as exhibit collectively A4?
Yes.
Okay, and are you familiar with the waterfront redevelopment plan and its requirements?
Yes.
Okay, could you please start your presentation by discussing the surrounding area and existing conditions of the site?
Sure, can I share my screen at this time? Is that possible?
Yes.
I don't see the...
Yes, please.
I think it has to be allowed, right, because I don't see the...
No, you have the access.
In front of me, it's not typically where it is, the window.
It's the green screen, share screen button at the bottom.
Yes, thank you, I found it, right in front of my eyes. Okay. Let me move things around here. So I'd like to start with this exhibit prepared by Bowman Consulting. It's an aerial view of this particular portion of Asbury and our project in particular here. The purpose is to, of course, orient everyone, not that we all don't know where this project is, but also to show similar adjacent projects.
And this has been premarked as Exhibit A8?
Thank you.
So here is our parcel. I'm assuming everyone can see my cursor. It's Cookman Avenue, Wesley Lake, Heck Street, Asbury Avenue. Our site is a bit short of two acres. That's been discussed in the previous portions of the application for to show adjacent projects that are similar and built within the last 10, 15 years, also under the waterfront redevelopment plan. So we've got The Vibe here, which is a four-story residential building. You've got the Wesley Grove condominiums right here, also four stories. More recently, the Monroe directly across Heck Street to our west, when I say "our" meaning the applicant. And I mentioned The Vibe. So I can't see, I need to get rid of everyone's face so I can see my full screen, pardon me. Anyway, so the purpose of this, as I mentioned, to show all the adjacent properties. So what I'd like to do now is zoom in to give you a brief description of what we're proposing for our property in terms of a site plan. And this will be discussed in more detail with Sean Delaney, our site engineer. Are you seeing the white box? Or is that just what I'm seeing?
We're seeing the white box.
I see the white box as well, maybe if you click outside of it, it will...
There we go.
Yeah.
Okay. So our parcels, I mentioned, is a bit less than two acres, it's 1.94 acres. Again, Asbury Avenue, Heck Street, and Cookman Avenue are boundaries. We're proposing 48 residential units within eight, pardon me, three clusters of structures. Each of the clusters would have eight buildings. Each of those eight buildings will have two units. Therefore, there's 16 residential units in this cluster, 16 residential units in this cluster, 16 residential units in this cluster. Our project is proposed at four stories with the exception of all of our corners, and that'll make more sense when I get to the floor plans and the renderings. The corners are actually three stories. So whereas four stories is allowed and permitted as part of the 2019 amendment to the redevelopment plan, four stories allowed, we're proposing four with some three-story sections at the corners. And it's my understanding that parts of this parcel can actually have up to eight stories. Nevertheless, we're proposing four stories, which is consistent with the other adjacent properties that have been built recently and consistent with the waterfront redevelopment plan. So as I mentioned, 48 total units, eight per cluster, three clusters. A vehicular ingress and egress is here. Again, Sean Delaney will discuss this in more detail. So now we'll go to the actual architectural plans.
And this has been premarked as Exhibit A4?
Yes. Okay. So this is a rendering showing what we think the building will look like. We know the building will look like, looking at it from Asbury Avenue. So first thing you'll probably notice is the color is in gray tones. And this rendering is a bit tinted gray, but we are proposing gray tones. We will need a deviation from the architectural guidelines, but we think that it makes perfect sense in this particular case because, and it'll make more sense too as I get into the other drawings, we're proposing in terms of materials, fiber cement board that looks like a cedar shake. So our thought process was to have this have a softer kind of soothing look as a weathered wood look. So that is not specifically permitted within the architectural guidelines, but we do think it makes sense giving what contemporary coastal architecture would be, could be. And we also think it makes sense giving some of the other projects that have been recently approved and constructed. So you'll notice that there are bay projections along the facade. There are changes in colors. So we've used articulation, color changes, changes in heights of the bay projections, all with the expected effect of having what could have been perceived as a very long facade been broken down to smaller masses. We went through lots of effort to make sure that this building doesn't read as one mass. We wanted it to read as a townhome structure. We wanted it to read as smaller buildings as part of a bigger whole. And to that point, none of the facades have been dealt with or treated as if they were a rear facade. Every facade is treated, as you see here, some with bay projections, some not. But in every case, we contemplated that the building would be seen. So there isn't a primary facade and a secondary facade. We really made the effort to have this building look good, we think, from any perspective. Here is another view. This is facing east on the interior view. So this would be as you would be entering from our residential vehicular ingress and egress as well as a sidewalk. So that same theme applies, we've used bay projections, changes in the gray tones, wood cedar shakes, wood vertical siding, all with the idea that we were trying to soften and have a contemporary look to what could have been, if done not well, could have looked like one big mass. So in terms of height, you'll see that this entire section here is three stories. Our fourth story is actually set back, and in front of that would be roof terraces. So again, that's a way of softening the perceived mass. At the corners in each case, and you'll see that here, the building is actually three stories. So where we could have, in compliance with the actual redevelopment plan, had this section be four stories, we've actually softened the edge of the buildings by having them at three stories as opposed to four.
Mr. Minervini, may I interrupt you? This is Eric Gallapo, board member. Can you, for the benefit of the board, indicate on your site plan the arrow views which these renderings represent?
Yes, so the first view would be right about here, you're looking from Asbury Avenue, if you can see that. The view that I had just talked about, and we'll get back to, is right about here, looking in this direction. And I'm glad I have this drawing up again because I did want to mention, it came up at the last meeting. Again, we went through extra efforts to have no section of this building be a rear facade. In other words...
May I, sorry, before you move on, are you going to provide a rendering of the Cookman Avenue frontage?
I don't, we may have an elevation, I don't have an actual rendering. But we'll go through them, and I'll just remind myself, I don't think we have a rendering from Cookman. I will tell you that the side facades are virtually the same in each of these cases, so I can discuss what Cookman would look like beyond what is contemplated, of course, as the open space park. The thought is that not very much of this facade is going to be seen.
Understood. So just for the purposes of our discussion, would you describe the facades that face Cookman Avenue as the sides of residential units? Not fronts or backs, sides?
Yes, well, sides in the sense that they're the shorter facade.
Understood.
So you've got that condition here, you've got that condition here, here. So obviously, if there's a rectangle, two of the sides will be shorter. And it is in our case, the two shorter sides are facing Cookman.
Now, I guess my question relates to, you've chosen on Asbury Avenue to have a long facade facing Asbury Avenue. You've chosen to have a long facade facing Heck Street, and then you have two side facades facing Cookman. And to the concern that I have that Cookman being the major connector between the commercial vitality of downtown and the entertainment district of the waterfront, how does that side facade address the transition in uses along Cookman Avenue in a way that relates to them rather than having all of the vibrant pedestrian life that should be happening there, looking at the sides of buildings, when you've chosen and all of the examples you pointed at show long facades facing streets?
Well, I understand your question. I think we would have designed this site differently if this park area weren't here. So I think your point is certainly valid if you remove the idea that the park is there. So when designing this initially, we knew that this area is going to be park, and therefore there is a buffer between the park and our structures. That was paramount. So we knew that this area is a buffer.
Yes, however, I guess I have a question. So would you just, I would call this a park or a plaza. I don't want to be too specific, it's a plaza. And I guess my concern is that the side facades facing the public use will, one, make it feel private, and, two, will have the effect of not managing the transition of where the front doors normally face. And right now, your site plan, which you've chosen to put the park in that space, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I think it's a great location for a public space or a plaza. The corner makes a lot of sense. But are there ways that the buildings do not engage that public space in ways that both the waterfront redevelopment plan requires and urban design practices sort of suggest we should do? That isn't to say that the facade treatments you've chosen for the side aren't nice. They're lovely. But it's the side of a building facing Main Street.
And we did look at several ways to lay out these building clusters. Because once we determined that there will be internal circulation, vehicular circulation, which obviously with a site like this, that makes no sense. It also then allows us not to have a series of garages off the street. So once we make that determination, we play with building clusters in terms of the locations. Again, we have to remember that we determined that this area made the most sense for, we'll call it open area, plaza, park, open area. It made most sense for an open public area because it was the triangle, and it was this five-way intersection. So that seemed to us to be the appropriate place for the park.
I agree with you.
Yeah, and so if we then extrapolate what I think your question was leading to, if we were to have the building oriented this way, which is what you're suggesting, you would then have an L-shaped structure, which in terms of townhomes and even residential buildings in general that are multifamily, doesn't work very well. This way, by doing it this way, it allowed much more wall surface area facing internally for garages. But again, that's all secondary to the idea that this had to be an open area. And the fact that our facades are shorter there, we don't think means that they haven't, they're not addressing the public space. There isn't a connection, a physical connection, right here at this location. We don't contemplate that, and we don't think it makes any particular sense for the residents nor the public. But there is a landscape buffer within our property as well as whatever this open space becomes. I don't think it makes sense, it would have made sense for us to design this with a longer facade facing the open space.
But the front doors do not, like, let's just, for the record, the front doors of 16 of these residential units do not face a street?
They face an internal street, correct?
They, no, they do not face a street.
Yes, they don't face a public street, I'm not arguing with you at all, at all. I think that's a positive in this case.
Could, well, it's positive for the residents, it creates an alleyway that, you know, it's positive for the residents of these locations. So what is there, a different lot subdivision schema that could have led to buildings facing the streets on all sides? And the reason I bring this up is because, do you know, there are, do you know how many intersections there are in Asbury Park where more than two streets come together?
I don't know that number, of course, no.
There are four.
Okay.
There are four. Two of them are on Cookman, and two of them, one is on Monroe and one is on Asbury Avenue. So these are the only places where we have that frustration of the grid, where what you're talking about, about why it's logical to have the public space in the triangle. That makes sense. It also makes sense from a public space design standpoint. There's relief from the intersection, there's space, there's all of that. It makes a lot of sense to put the public space there. But what doesn't necessarily make sense is to look at the most active downtown commercial strip and then put unactive facades facing it. And I think that we can look across the street to Wesley Grove, which is a perfectly fine project. But we can look at it and say, it does not enliven Cookman Avenue in the way that Cookman Avenue is enlivened along the rest of its length.
I don't think that is necessarily a fair assessment of what we've proposed because we have to, I don't want to lose this fact that this park is something that is not within the redevelopment plan as a requirement. We're proposing it. So again, not park, pardon me, open space. So we're proposing the open space. Again, once we put that there, there is going to be some semblance of a facade that's facing it. So the question becomes whether it's a long facade or a short facade, as I see it. And I think the way we've addressed it here does make sense. And I think that if, let's imagine that a different entity owned the property, and there was no, as they saw it, a public giveback, which this, I think, is. they, there was no, as they saw it, a public giveback, which this, I think, is, you would have very simply had a long section of building right here that would have mimicked in terms of its angle, Wesley Grove, and you would have had an, an L-shaped building here, which had been similar to the Monroe. With, I don't think it, we can take, we can pull out the design of the site from the fact that it is driven mostly by this open space.
I would disagree that it's driven mostly by that open space. That open space is one parameter, and I think you've put it in the right spot, but I do think that, once you say that, you can't just say, oh, this is the only solution. And the subdivision plan is driving the architecture, the fine, the good architecture that you've done, and the careful design around articulation of the facades and breaking down of the masses. But my concern, and I will end my point here as to let you move on, my concern is that you have sides, sides of your buildings facing what is supposed to be a significant public space, and in today's age, I think we need to examine what the function of that public space should be, and what the landscape language of that public space should be. But I do, I am concerned that Cookman Avenue, being the primary commercial and pedestrian connector between the Boardwalk Entertainment Zone and the downtown commercial zone, should be enlivened with facades, and that is in fact a requirement of the waterfront redevelopment plan. You may, you can, that's my opinion, and-
Understood.
We will also, just to add a, a point to that, we will address this as well during our site engineering testimony, where we give further specific explanation as to what drove this specific layout on the site, in addition to what Mr. Minervini's been describing as, you know, the architectural treatments, and obviously, one of the driving factors with the public open space. But also, here, we wanted to point out that the overall design is the same as what, what was done for the South Grand Project, and is very similar in design to what was done for Vibe, so it's very much in keeping with those types of designs. But as I indicated before, we'll have our site engineer address this further with respect to the overall layout, and we'll have our planner address it from a planning perspective as well, to your point.
I just want to point out that both the Vibe and the Grand Project have facades facing the long streets, have, have, have facades facing the avenues and the major streets. This one has facades facing a side street and an, and an avenue.
And again, because we have the open space here, that's the difference, that's the big difference.
But there are plenty of buildings that front on open spaces. In fact, some of yours do.
Hi, this is Rick Lambert, kind of following up with Eric. I, I think, and he made a good point, you, you keep referring to the open spaces as the driving factor, but part of the, the issue is that the subdivision creates a lot that confines your ability to create some other options, maybe for designing the layout. And so you're not, you've chosen this subdivision size, which kind of limits the amount of space you have, when you have a completely empty lot that can be manipulated to create a design solution that really addresses Cookman Avenue in a much more responsive way, that enlivenes the, enlivened the streetscape, and create a, a much more inviting facade than the sides of two buildings. I, I mean, I'm in total agreement with Eric.
I, I can't speak to what will come in the other parcel, or why this particular parcel isn't bigger. What we've done is design what we think is the best layout for this particular parcel. Can this be designed 3,000 different ways? Certainly. This is the way we think is the best way to design it, given the proportions and the size of our parcel as proposed. But with, with that in mind, let me go back to the rendering, because I think, I, I don't want to lose the fact that the side facades are also, we think, well-designed.
There's nobody disputing that yet.
Yes, yes. That was good. So although it's a shorter facade, there was still effort and attention paid to it with the knowledge that it would be facing, in a very small section, Cookman, more of it, the majority of it, will be facing a buffered area from, on our property than the open space. But I, I get your point, and I will continue.
Frank, I'm so sorry to interrupt, this is Irene Gasparian. I just want to note for the record that Jim Henry has joined the meeting. It is 6:35 PM. Thank you, you can continue.
Some design details, following up on what I initially discussed. So again, this is just a, a sample section of the facade, and this, not that it repeats, but it's similar throughout the project. So we've got bay projections, help with the, add articulation, which again, we think make them for a more dynamic facade, as well as, as making the perceived mass a bit smaller than it could have been otherwise. So we've got bay projections here, we vary the heights, we varied the shades of gray, and I've already explained where, why we think gray is a, is a good choice here, although it does require a deviation from architectural guidelines, and as importantly, if not more importantly, the setback fourth floor. So this did not, if, if we were to conform completely with the guidelines, with the plan, we didn't have to set that fourth floor back. We think it was a better solution, given the mass of the building, and, and eventually the, the internal layouts of the apartment, so you can see the color.
Hi, this is Rick Lambert, again. So I, I have concerns about the color. I think that the, the facade articulation is really nice, you've done a really good job in creating a very interesting architectural solution, and it's, some of it gives, it kind of reminds me of Vibe, in the projections and recesses, and kind of variation of the finistration, and some of the other features, but I think the gray is, is just not really a good color choice. You referred to kind of this coastal architecture feel, which Vibe, I think, really reflects, you know, in a very excellent way, and I think the waterfront redevelopment plan really gives you a lot of color options, and for you all to decide on one that's not really in there, just doesn't seem like a really good design solution. It seems like there are a lot of other options you can do to create this kind of coastal architecture feel, that doesn't have to be gray. It seems like it could be more colorful and kind of more, you know, have more life to it.
Well, you did, you chose Vibe, because that is the most colorful of the buildings that I had certainly discussed. The others aren't particularly colorful, they're, they're earth tones, which is what we were shooting for here, but although the, the plan doesn't allow specifically this gray tone, it is something you would see in coastal architecture, and we think the gray, especially in, in a more contemporary version of a coastal architecture. That's not to say that we're trying to force a gray color, which has been very popular on modern architecture these days, onto the city of Asbury. Here, we think the gray color happens to make perfect sense, again, because of the traditional materials you would have used, and what a weather material would look like. So I, I hear what you're saying, I don't necessarily agree.
Well, you know, we have, so the Boardwalk itself has got that kind of feel, this is Rick Lambert, has that, that same color feel. Then there was the push for the gray colors on the pavilions, the former McLues now, has, they repainted it to have, to go with that seasonal gray weather look, so I mean, there's an abundance of the gray that's being promoted within the design of different elements in the waterfront. So to continue, it just seems like it would be very nicer to bring other color in there, not continue with this gray tone that is kind of infiltrating all over.
I will also say that the, we went through the TRC process, of course, and I, I thought that we took out of that, that this gray, in this particular case, with these particular materials, was something that would be more palatable. So we will have to, I guess, discuss that as this meeting goes on, but I think it's architecture and how it fits in, I, I do think this is a very nice solution.
Mr. Minervini, will you be covering your floor plans as part of this presentation?
Yes, yes.
So I just wanted, we'll want to come back to this slide when we cover your first floor plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
Mr. Minervini, just to, to add to your testimony, this was, discussed this particular color palette with TRC.
Yes. Okay.
Jim Henry, may I ask a question?
Of course.
The waterfront redevelopment plan was well-thought-out. It took an extensive period of time to develop that plan, and all the guidelines that supported that plan. And at the TRC meeting, from the notes, it looks like certain things were requested, and you seem to ignore those requests in your presentation here, and I'd like an explanation of why that might be. And specifically, one of the things is the building not fronting on a street, unless you intend to put a street in where the old Heck Street was, and the windows, the colors, the materials of the, used in the building. An awful lot of time and effort went into the planning of all these things, and now it seems that these are being ignored. Can you comment on it?
Of course, yes. My recollection of the TRC was that there were comments about the materials, more focused on what our bay extensions were. We at one point had a black metal, we did make many accommodations and revisions as per TRC request. To, to your bigger point about the guidelines, I, I don't think guidelines are ever meant to be, for lack of a better term, a bible. I think the guidelines are guidelines, and I think if you look back through recent history, for example, in Asbury Park, many of the very successful, in terms of their architectural presence, projects needed deviations from the architectural guidelines. So when we started this process on the architectural portion, we look at, of course, what the architectural guidelines are, what, also, what projects have been recently approved, constructed, and have been architecturally successful. We take all those things into consideration. I, we, I don't think we should be required to follow those guidelines specifically. If, where we don't follow them specifically, we have to justify why we are not, and I think that that's what I have done, or am trying to do, in terms of the materials here.
Okay, I hear your explanation, thank you.
Okay.
John Moore, can I say something?
Yes, please.
Okay, hey, Jim, I agree with you, in 2002, this was a well-thought-out plan. It's 2020, maybe in 2002, you and I wore bell bottoms. Okay, we had fat ties instead of thin ties. I mean, it's 18 years different, we have to have some flexibility from a plan developed, which is good in 2002, but it's 2020, it's a changing world every day. That's my only comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Side elevations, which are important, of course, especially as per the most recent discussion, you'll see in some of the cases, the, the side elevations are also our main entry points to, to the particular units behind them. So here, we've got a door, here, we've got a door. Again, the reason I point that out is because these, these side facades were never thought to be secondary, as I keep on using that description, because I think it's an appropriate one, secondary to the main facades in terms of length, they are just shorter. We also used articulation, here is bay projections, we used a window pattern that, that we think adds some dynamic movement to this, and here, you can clearly see the setbacks. So we've got a setback along the, the longer facade at this point, longer facade here, with the expected end product to feel less like a four-story building than it could have otherwise.
Are, are there other buildings on Cookman Avenue whose sides face Cookman Avenue?
I don't know that answer, I, as I think about this, I don't think there are any other particular parcels that have these, the same conditions as we do, so I'm not-
That's a, that's a different question, but are there any other sides, it's just, are there any other buildings on Cookman Avenue whose sides, who, whose address is Cookman Avenue and faces Cookman Avenue?
I don't know that answer.
Or does not face Cookman?
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer, I suspect, no, that's why you're asking, I don't know the answer.
There are two buildings that have sides facing Cookman Avenue, but their addresses are on Main Street, and so there, that's a, a normal condition when you have a Main Street and a side street, you have one set of buildings with side facades, but that's at the intersection of Cookman and Main Street. This would be the first additional building with a side facade facing the major commercial thoroughfare connecting downtown to the entertainment district.
I, I think we have to step back in, I'm going back to this, to this exhibit, because as you're describing it, if, if you weren't, if someone wasn't familiar with what we're proposing, you would think that we've got a, a side facade right up against the sidewalk, and there is no articulation, no design paid attention to it. However, in this case, again, I have to keep on going back to the point that we've got this open space, so it is a different condition as compared to what you're describing. Not saying I don't understand your point, but I think that the-
However, the other three-way intersection on Cookman Avenue at Post, at Post Square also has a very small triangular open space, it's sort of in the middle, the buildings have relief, so there are, the, the reason that this should matter here is because it's a special intersection. It's not geometrically favorable, it's a little bit different, and that argues for a special treatment, which is, I think, we're saying the same thing there, right? This is a special corner, it should be treated as such. But the purpose of Cookman Avenue, and the reason the redevelopment plan, and I agree with, with Mayor Moore here, the redevelopment plan, we have to know what to keep of it, and what was not, you know, maybe we want to let go of a little bit more, because time has passed. However, good urban design says that facades and front doors face streets, and face Main Streets, and the thing that makes Cookman Avenue vibrant is the variation, the front doors, the coming and going, the in and the out, and that is not what is being achieved here by having sides of buildings face a very public street, where there is going to be additional public space. Having that interaction with the street is important and a critical part of our city's history. It's urban, this feels very residential, and maybe a little out of character, because it's so internal-facing, it's so internal to itself, it turns its side to the public space, and that's my concern. I don't, like, the gray, the, and the articulation of the facade is very sensitive to what you are trying to achieve, but what you're trying to achieve might not achieve what the public deserves out of the primary commercial thoroughfare connecting the entertainment zone to downtown.
I understand your point, I hope I, as I get further in, I could sway you otherwise, but I will keep trying.
I need to interject here, you have to keep in mind that this layout, unless I'm mistaken, has received the approval of the TRC-
And City Council, correct.
And the Redevelopment Agency as the mayor and council.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, I, I know I'm taking quite a bit of time, I will go through the other drawings. Here's another side facade, again, highlighting the fact that we've got entry doors, bay projections, setbacks, and the larger parts of the facade are three stories, with this section that would just stare beyond it, setback, again, with the idea of having this facade not read as just a side facade, it reads as much more than that, I think. More materials of another section of the front entry, here you can see the setback, which is on, on some of the buildings, your setback entries, which will become more clear as I get to the floor plans. The full facade in colored elevation along Asbury Avenue, you've seen part of this before as a perspective view, so I've described much of this before, but here's what you would see if it were an elevation drawing, in an elevation drawing, pardon me. Side views again, and I'm, I'm glad that these are showing up at this point, because relative to our recent conversation here, I don't think they read as side facades, I think they read as smaller facades. So the internal view, our garages, as I mentioned, each of these, each unit has two parking spaces, one in the driveway, one in- one in the driveway, one in the internal garage. Floor plans. So if we imagine each of these structures is 26 feet wide and the length varies between 68 and 67 and 69 feet, depending on where the bay is and whether that particular part of a building has a bay or not. You can see that here's our garage. So imagine these together. This would be an entry. And on this side, the building be flipped, so the same exact thing. Here's your main residential entry to one unit here, one unit here. There is a, towards the top of the plan as I'm circling, this is one unit. The rear is another unit. The unit sizes range. We've got quite a variety in size in between 1,753 square feet to 2,884 square feet, three bedrooms or four bedrooms, depending on the particular layout. You can see at this drawing, I'm calling the fourth floor in this particular case, you've got showing your fourth floor setback. So there is outdoor space here, there's outdoor space here. These decks are meant for use, of course, only by the unit they're attached to. We do have a small condensing unit out here, but that will be screened. Let's go to the next. Similar floor plans, just on a different section of the building. Same here. And what this, this particular floor plan is important to show the corners of each of these structures. Each of the three clusters has an end unit. And you can see that the end unit is really only three stories. So this entire section is not floor plan, is not floor area, pardon me. Again, with the intention of softening the edges of the building. I think relative to our recent conversation about how the building fronts along Cookman, I would agree, I think, a bit more if we didn't have these setbacks. But then you would have just basically the side of the building at four stories. And I think with these efforts and these design changes at these particular points, we don't have just the side of a building facing those areas. So that's it for my architectural plans. Happy to answer questions. I think just a quick architectural summary. I think although we need deviations, exceptions, pardon me, from the architectural guidelines, I think they're warranted given the particular design of this building, given the particular materials that we've chosen. I think that we made many changes during the TRC process, which I think were very successful. With that, I'm happy to answer questions.
So you are not providing an elevation along Cookman Avenue?
I don't have a street elevation. I have the side elevations, which are the exact same as these. I can certainly...
But like, of the whole length across the site?
No, remember that...
You will have two of those, correct?
So we didn't provide that because this, your actual...
But you would cut, if you cut the line to the left of the public space, we would...
Yes, and that is the exact same facade as this one, which I did show.
Right, but I think it's important to see the relationship between the buildings so we understand the composition along the street, just like you've shown the architectural composition along Asbury Avenue.
Understood, and I could happily, if the board allowed, provide that.
I would like to see just line drawing elevations of all three sides.
Happy to do it.
And you don't need to, I don't need to see the design of the public space on your Cookman side.
Okay, understood. So I think that's it for the architectural testimony with the happy-to-answer questions.
This is Mike Manzal. I just have a quick question. I want to try to understand, locate your floor plans, entrance ways for the different various models. It was a little confusing, I think.
Yeah, and Mike, I think this will be the, if you don't mind me calling you Mike, this is the right, this is the best drawing to answer those questions. Because as I gave you the floor plans, you wouldn't, you would see each of these, but you may not see this one and this one together. So there is a recess entry for these two, these two, and these two. So you come down this recess entry, which separates the two structures. You've got two entries here for the two units in this section, two entries here, one and one for the units in this section. The corner structures, corner buildings, apartments, here and here, have their entries at the corner. So as we talked about this facade a lot, you've got an entry here and an entry here for each of the two apartments. Now, you also have the opportunity to enter these apartments, the ones that are facing this section, the ones that are facing Heck and the ones that are facing Asbury, along those streets. Your main entry is likely to be here, depending on whether you're walking or you're driving. If you're driving, your main entry will likely be through the internal system. Or if you're walking along Heck Street, walking along Asbury, you're more likely to enter your apartment here.
So just to confirm, it's accurate to say that each and every single unit in this proposed development has an entryway both from the street or pedestrian path and also from the alleyway?
Not all, not all, majority, but not all. And I'll go to the floor plan to, now that I've described it in that, in those terms. Not all do. So here's the lower section of the floor plan. So this, imagine this is Heck. Only this apartment facing Heck has an entry at that point.
Okay, okay. So about, really about half, it seems, or so, have two entries where the other half only have the one from the alley?
Yeah, I think that's probably correct.
So can you talk about the, I don't know, I'll call it the muse at the east side of the site?
This section?
Yeah.
It is, and our landscape architect and site engineer will talk about it in more detail than I can. It is contemplated as being a walkway behind our structure. It's not contemplated as being for public use. So at this point, it's not meant to be public use for many reasons. I think one would be security, but I'm not the right person to answer those questions. But to the point that came up, and I think you may have been the person, the commissioner who mentioned it last time, we did treat this facade with the knowledge that someday there will be a structure here. So again, there isn't a back of the building, so...
Except, except those, that, what would you call that bar of buildings? So what cluster is that?
I don't know if they've been named, but we can call it, for this purpose, the southeast.
Okay, so the southeast cluster has no doors facing a street?
Correct. Well, you could consider these two facing Cookman, as you did. I don't necessarily. But the entries are here as well.
So there's 16 units that don't face a street?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's an accurate number.
Plus, there's eight in unit, the southwest, that don't have doors facing a street?
Yeah, I would say that half of these approximately, as previously discussed, are accessed from the internal roadway system and sidewalk system.
Can you tell us the total, in our next, whenever, can you just total up for us how many front doors are facing a public street?
16.
And how many units do you have?
We've got 48 units. There are 16...
So 25% of your units have front door access on a public street?
25% have street frontage, yes, access. Oh, pardon me? Well, no, that number is still correct because there is the corner condition here, as I mentioned.
I think we could debate whether that's a front door.
Yeah, 17.
Yes. So we're somewhere around less than a third of the unit. So 25%, a quarter of the units have direct access to a street?
Yes. And I think I should point out that if this were designed as a multifamily residential building as opposed to a townhome design, you would likely have much less than that. So I think...
But all of the people would be coming through the same entrances?
They'd be coming through likely one particular entrance.
This is 75% of people have their own entrances off the street?
Yes, which I think we can agree is a good thing relative to if this were a...
It's a good thing for the residents. It creates a sense of privatization of what is a very urban space. We can go on?
Okay, our landscape architect will discuss that. We think we've designed it so it won't feel disconnected, but Brian will do a better job than I could describing that.
Hi, this is Rick Lambert. I just want to go back to the muse development. So those units that, the eastern side of the southeast cluster, are those the front doors to those units that face the muse?
Well, they can, they are a door. So they can enter here or here.
So I'm saying, like, so that's going to be a public, that's going to be a public rideaway, that street, I mean, a public access?
No, that's for private use for the residents of this property.
Right, and that will be, as he indicated, that will be further discussed in detail by our site engineer as well as the landscaping will be discussed by our landscape architect, that element and how it relates to the overall site and the rationale behind it being a private sidewalk.
So if somebody wanted to come visit those people, they'd have to come through the alley and come up the back way through the alley?
Or they could take the main entry here, use the sidewalk, and enter any of those, any of those apartments here, 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 here.
Okay, thank you.
Any of these could be entered from the internal. Okay, you're welcome.
Does the board have any further comments?
I don't think we do.
Mr. Serpico, did you want to open up the testimony to the public?
One second. Okay, yeah, for the members of the public or anyone else that intends to cross-examine the witness, okay? I want you to understand the chairwoman's comments at the beginning that the questions have to relate to the testimony. They have to be relevant to the testimony. They are not to be characterizations of the testimony and then the question thrown on at the end. And I will strictly enforce the rules. And I will give one or two warnings. And after that, if anyone decides that they don't want to follow those rules, they'll be muted. All relevant questions are welcome. Quantity is not the issue. It's relevancy. And if anyone has any questions of me about my instructions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack. So let's begin, open up to public questions for this testimony only. And the first person who raised their hand is Barbara Kryzak. Go ahead and ask your question.
Good evening, this is Barbara Kryzak, 309 Lake Avenue. I had a question about, based on the presentation, which particular depiction would be closest to what would be viewable on Cookman Avenue? I know we've had a lot of discussion about it, but to me, it was unclear which of these presentations were going to be seen on Cookman.
Okay. If, I'm assuming you can, of course, see this. These are the typical side facades ranging colors and they vary a bit in bay projections and some of the articulation. But this is what you would see if you were on Cookman and if there were no open space between you. This is what you would see if the open space were just a concrete plaza. It's, of course, we think it's going to be something planted, but that's yet to be determined. You would see this, it's a side view of the building. When I say side, in this case, I'm talking about a relative length. And here. And in both cases, you have entries to these apartments. So they're not, by virtue, they are side facades by virtue of their size, but they're not, they haven't been disregarded in terms of architecture and their use. Again, there's entries on every one of our side facades, there's an entry. We really took that into consideration.
Would you mind that, can you show me that next to the public space, you also have these doors? So can we just see, so people will, just show me where those doors are, right there?
Yeah, right there and right here.
So how can people, how can the residents, how are the residents walking in via their driveway?
Residents are walking in here or here.
But to that door, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, to that door?
Yeah. Now, I don't think that we've got a sidewalk designed here. We probably could, coming right off in this particular case, Heck. Keep in mind that this portion is within our boundary line, our property, and this is all heavily landscaped. So whatever I showed you that you would possibly see from Cookman will be softened with this landscaping.
And I thank Eric Galpo for asking for the elevations for those, for what faces Cookman because quite a few people that have been noticed live facing that particular view. So it would be good for the residents to be able to see what are they going to see. So that's what, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, so here's, and I will make it more clear and I'll make it more appropriate for the Cookman parcel. I will say that I just remembered that this section, this is an older drawing. We do have a sidewalk here. So anyone entering, if they happen to live here or here, they could enter through the sidewalk section and here as well. I should have remembered that.
So when you deliver your elevations, they will have the correct width of the cartway?
Yes, yes. And I think what I would, what I'd probably do is I would take the elevation and align here, not parallel to Cookman, because he was...
Correct.
Fine.
One other thing, if I may. Can you just state again that that path that is on the east, are we saying that that is not a public path? That is a private path, is that true?
That is for the use of the residents of this property only. Our site engineer can better describe it than I could, but yes, that's correct.
All right, I can wait till the site engineer comes up because it just seems inconsistent that if I'm on Heck, I can walk in anywhere. But if I'm facing east on that walkway, I can't get in as a member of the public.
Understood.
Jack Serpico, if I may. Frank, I'm not sure if this question's for you or Jennifer at some point, but TRC in its resolution referenced the recommendations made by Michelle Alonso in that report that Jennifer identified earlier as A8, perhaps?
No, A14.
A14, yeah. And one of the concerns, and she had seven or eight concerns or recommendations, number four was that the pathway connecting Asbury Avenue and Heck Street shall be realigned to line up with Berg, which may be close to that now, and that the pathway be public access.
That is correct. That was a recommendation by the planning director. The applicant took that into consideration. However, for a number of reasons, which will be discussed in detail by our site engineer, we determined that ultimately, with the primary reason being the safety and security of the residents and, you know, that being a driving factor, that this area remain private.
If that is a recommend, if that's what the mayor and council recommended, I don't know that we have the authority to alter it. As part of the TRC and Redevelopment Agency approval of the project, they directly referenced that as a condition.
Yeah, this is Rick Lambert. It says "shall," it doesn't say, like, you consider it. It says it "shall be made."
Now, there may be other things that I'm going to have to bring up at a later point regarding the design and layout. I'm going to have to bring up at a later point regarding the design and layout that the TRC and the mayor and council have dictated, which may go in another direction legally. But as for this condition, I don't know that we have the authority to alter the TRC's approval. We don't sit in superior jurisdiction to the TRC. Our jurisdiction is subservient to the TRC when it comes to certain things and the mayor and council. When I speak of TRC, I mean both. The redevelopment agency, the planning board does not have, their jurisdiction is subservient to that of the mayor and council in certain areas of the approvals. And that seems to be a pretty specific approval and recommendation by the city cap, but the council seems us to want us to follow that. I don't, I don't see the, the ability to interpret that one.
Jack, this is Mike Manzella. I mean, ultimately, this goes back to council for final approval, right? So
No.
Oh, no, you're right. I apologize, yeah. Not.
We're here to approve a subdivision and a, and a classic site plan and design waivers and a couple of the variances, the frontage variances.
Right, okay.
So it's something that may have to be addressed. We can move on, but it's, 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 it's a pretty finite point. It's pretty direct, pretty direct instruction from the mayor and council.
Where is the specific representation that the applicant shall comply with that specific comment? I'm just looking at the resolution which approved.
Says that the applicant is to comply with the recommendations made by, here, on the second page of the resolution, the last, whereas just above the paragraph that begins with now therefore be resolved, it says, whereas the mayor and council, acting as the city's redevelopment entity, wish to set forth their conceptual approval for the entity's project and refer the matter to the planning board for appropriate approvals, including but not limited to preliminary and final site plan approvals and considerations of the recommendations of the city council of planning and redevelopment agency and their TRC respective memos. Now.
Right, but in the resolve clause under section three, it says the mayor and council recommend that the planning board take into regard the site recommendations. So again, it uses the word recommend twice.
I stand corrected. I stand corrected in reading, in the whereas that I said where it says and consideration of the recommendations. There's no, there's no direct
There's no mandate.
There's no mandate that we have to follow that, but it certainly is something we have to consider. So I'm sorry about that.
Correct, absolutely. And we will give detailed testimony as to all of our rationale as to why we believe it's, it's properly suited as a private accessway and that will be part of our site engineering testimony as well as part of our landscape testimony.
Right, and then the board will decide whether or not they agree with you.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm sorry, Barbara, if you have more questions, go right ahead.
I do not, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to call on the next person whose name is Barbara Lisinski. Please go ahead and ask your questions.
I had a question, it's more of a safety concern that mirroring path from Cookman to Asbury Avenue and the proposal that there will be a building put next to it. Is that going to become a fire lane? I'm concerned about the safety in case there's a fire in those units. How are the fire departments going to access the back? I don't know.
I think that's a question for our site engineer.
Yes, the emergency access will be specifically addressed in our site engineering testimony.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. And the next person whose hand is raised is phone number ending in 5012. Go ahead and ask your question.
Yeah, hi, this is Doug McQueen. I live at 4 Wesley Court here in Asbury Park. I have a couple of questions, just for clarification on some of the other things that were already asked. Mr. Minervini, you, you mentioned a couple of times regarding the architectural design that the design seeks to soften or the way the, the building heights and some of the other architectural characteristics seek to soften the building's presentation, I guess, to the adjacent streets. But is that consistent with the waterfront redevelopment plan that contemplates that the facades will actually straight, shape the street? So I'm trying to rectify that, what seems like an inconsistency between what the waterfront redevelopment plan says that the designs of buildings will do versus the need to try and soften things. You look at, and just to make it clear, I could explain. You look at Wesley Grove, the condominium across the street, and the, the cornice lines on the top of that building were intentionally designed to help shape the street, to give the street feel and define the edge. And here, it seems like you're trying for something different.
I don't think that's, yeah, no, I don't think that's a fair characterization what I was, at least I was trying to point that across. When I mentioned soften, and I was talking about purely the overall mass, we still have on both street frontages, a three-story facade on the street. What I was trying to point out, and apparently not successfully, was that by setting back that top floor, we didn't have a four-story structure directly on the street. Certainly, that's permitted and it is in other places within Asbury Park and much more in many urban areas. But for this particular project, we thought this was a good solution, given the building's length.
Okay, so related to that, related to the building mass and how it does or doesn't front Cookman Avenue, are the layouts of the buildings constrained by the proposed lot sizes of the proposed lot subdivision?
No, I think the subdivision is, is a result of this building design, of this site design.
Okay. And, you know, I, I don't know if this, how much information this can give us, but why wasn't a Cookman Avenue elevation provided with the package when that's such an important street? And that view is so important to how this project presents itself to Cookman Avenue?
Well, I, I think you're implying that it was not provided for a particular reason. The facades here and here, if you can see the screen, if not, the Cookman facades are the exact same as the other facades I've shown. We didn't provide them simply because the reality of what you perceive on Cookman is all dependent upon this open space. I understood the points made and we will provide them. But there was no particular intention as not to. It was more about what, if, if an elevation is meant to reflect what is seen from the street, I don't know that answer yet for the majority of the facade along Cookman.
And this, I'm listening to this, the other questions from some of the other participants about that meandering pathway along the eastern side. This, so this may be a more appropriate question for the landscape architect, but let me know if it is or not. The, the, the design with that pathway, especially if it's private, seems to create a, even if it's not gated, not a gated community, but more of a cloistered community. Is that consistent? Is a cloistered community consistent with a waterfront redevelopment plan?
Well, I, I don't think that's what it's doing. I think it's buffering what could be another structure to our east. So that pathway, although it connects Cookman and Asbury in some sense, is a buffer.
That the public won't have any access or view on, correct?
Correct, it is meant, again, for only the residents of this property. Our civil engineer, site engineer, pardon me, will describe that in better detail than I could. But in terms of an overall concept, it is not, it is meant to buffer what will potentially be another development.
If you had put the side facades facing that other development, would it require such a significant level of buffering?
I think it would be the same. I think you're, you're going to want that, a, a space between whatever our structures are and the unknown to our east.
But it seems that on the Asbury Avenue frontage, you have some distance between the side yard of the building that's most east and the development that will be to the right. And then you make that dimension larger as you come down here, you're right. So it seems to me that you can accept a shorter dimension in buffering along, or, and you might not even need a side alley if the sides of the buildings faced the adjacent properties instead of the public streets.
If the sides of the buildings, if you face it, I know.
Just like every other side of the building faces the property to its side.
I know, and I certainly understand your point, but my answer is going to keep coming back to the same thing. The difference here is this open space.
But there are lots of buildings that front on open spaces.
Yeah, and, and we do too. It's just a shorter portion of our facade.
You do not front on an open space. Your sides face the open space.
If there's an, there, we're quibbling about probably the same thing. There are entries here and I, I get your point.
But that entry is heavily buffered from the open space.
Correct, that is right, that is right.
So your side, the side of your development faces Cookman Avenue.
I know, but I, I keep stopping you aside because that has implications different from what we're actually proposing. That's why I am sensitive to the word side, but I understand your point.
It seems like the tail is wagging the dog, is that the site subdivision and the site plan are saying this is the solution when the parameters don't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily, that's, this is not the only solution.
There are probably
Infinite, I agree. I don't want to suggest that you should be drawing this 100,000 times.
No, just to, to be, to be fair, we, at the start of this process, as in any process, we sit with the engineering team and we come up with what we think makes the most sense, given all the things you're talking about. Again, it would be a different scenario if this open space were not proposed and we would certainly not be looking at the design, I think, that we're looking at. I think if there weren't an open space here, which to, to, in, in my opinion, is a, is a really, really important give back, given the amount of intersection that happens at this point, I think then we would design the building just as you did across, as someone did across the street at Wesley Grove. Just an angled, an angled relative.
You would probably not be able to hit such an, such an acute corner.
Yes, it would be an odd condition, of course.
It would, you would actually probably follow something quite like the line that you've drawn where the public space is because the building can't be that angled. It shouldn't be, it would be a really, it could be, it would be a, it would be a horrible floor plan.
Yes, that's right.
Right, so so the acuteness of that angle is telling you where the public space should be. Nobody disagrees with that. It's in the right spot. But the relationship of the buildings and the subdivision plan creates something that allows something that is so internally focused and so private and so cloistered, to use one of the publics, in a place that is all about urbanity and activity and interaction and integration. And that's, and it's not a bad design. I don't want to say it's bad design because it's competent design. The materials are well thought out, the articulation of the facade, the breaking down of the masses, all of those things are true. But the side of your building faces the major public space and the public street. And I am concerned that Cookman Avenue needs to and wants to be that connector. And the public space will be diminished by the lack of activity that this arrangement of lot subdivisions and buildings imbues upon it. Public space is public interaction and it gives us important, important places to gather, to do things to. And, and now we actually need them to be stretched out and spread out along a street. We don't want activity necessarily only to happen in the downtown. It would be good to move some of that along and allow people to decompress.
I think we agree on much more than we disagree on.
Probably.
Yeah. And I'll leave it there.
And I'm sorry, Mr. McQueen, did you have another question?
Just one last question about, again, referencing the frontages, meaning the front doors to Cookman Avenue. Could the buildings be laid out with a, with the longest building fronting Cookman Avenue and all of the driveways facing Heck Street?
Yes, if there were no public open space proposed.
Wouldn't it just make a smaller triangle oriented a different way when the end of the building hits that area at the western corner?
No, if, if we all agree that the right location for a public open space is approximately where it's at, then the majority of Cookman, relative to our parcel, is not our building, our property is not fronting on Cookman. Our, our project is, our side yard is closer to Cookman, but the park, open space, pardon me, is the buffer. So what you're suggesting would work if that open space were not part of this design.
But if you oriented the buildings or a building parallel to Cookman Avenue, at some point, the side of that building would touch the, oh geez, I don't want to get into geometry, but I guess the base leg of Heck Street, still creating a triangle at the western end. Is that?
That, that could be done. Again, it goes back to something that was previously mentioned. If, if we were to, if you're looking at the plan now, if we were to swing our facade out, so it is then parallel with Cookman Avenue, on the one particular point where we are not buffered by the open space, you would wind up with a very strange condition. You would wind up with a building that, I'm talking about this point right here, of course.
That would determine about where you've drawn the line.
I'm referring to the western end. If, if a building was parallel to Cookman Avenue at the western side of, you'd still end up with a white triangle. The triangle would just be shaped differently.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. If you're saying that the building would go this way, parallel with Cookman?
Yes.
Or had it here, parallel with Cookman?
No, fronting Cookman, on Cookman.
Yeah, and I started my answer with, that would work if this were not public open space.
Mr. Serpico.
Probably not did a very good job, but this, more clearly, if this space were proposed give back, were not here, this design would certainly look different. We would likely then have a facade along Cookman. However, this open space, which was one of the starting points of the overall site design, tells us that the majority of our building will not have any frontage on Cookman. A very small section would. So with that, as a result, we oriented the building perpendicular to heck, perpendicular to Asbury, depending on where you are. And we left this small triangle left over as a buffer planted area between Cookman and our building. I think that the, the walk going east along Cookman, assuming that this is a nicely designed open space, would continue a nicely designed open space with this small section of our building that doesn't quite front, but is closer to Cookman.
But you could just as easily create, you could put your front doors facing Cookman, front doors, whatever.
Eric, can you announce your name?
Sorry, Eric Board Member, Eric Galpo Board Member, thank you, Irene. Thank you for the reminder. You know, you could have your front doors facing Cookman and a similar path that essentially creates a public, you know, face to the building and still gives your residents separation from the public space and all of the things that we expect from
I think I'm going to pull, I'm going to pull this drawing back a bit because we're losing, I'm losing in terms of my answers and I could do a better job. We need to understand that the majority of our property is not on this angle of Cookman. Although I understand the importance of Cookman, to us, it became less important in terms of the building layout once this space was determined to be open space. Not that it was less important as an experience. We thought we would continue whatever this experience would be. Absolutely, and I agree with many of the comments. If this weren't here, you would likely have a, a block of building here. You would still have a strange kind of open corner condition. I think the fact that this is open public space then lends perfectly to this orthogonal design.
As to this point, I think it's important to go back to the point As to this point, I think it's important to go back to the point that was previously made by Mr. Serpico in that the overall design of this project and this particular layout was presented to and approved by TRC and City Council with one of the factors being the public portion, the public open space, which was designed in this particular corner at this particular size. And that was specifically approved as part of our subsequent developers agreement with the city.
I'm just like, this is Rick Lambert Board Member, I'd just like to interject though that we, the planning board has to approve certain aspects of this, one is subdivision, which creates this leftover space that is going to be used as this park. And also waivers that are related to the design of this layout as a result of the way the this subdivision was created. So I understand that TRC approved this conceptual layout, but there are factors that we have to approve that are dictated, that can be affected by the way this is laid out, like the subdivision and these waivers. Because you have created, the applicant design has been created requiring waivers. It's a, it's a, it's an empty palette, but you've created a situation that you're now requesting waivers for. So while it's still approved, we still can have a right.
Absolutely, absolutely, and and we we acknowledge that. And we certainly understand that the the planning board's purview with respect to the overall design as well. And specifically to grant the relief that's required with respect to the design exceptions, as well as the bulk relief that we're seeking.
Yeah, I don't want to be, you, that it, this layout is a done deal and that this is.
Right, right. There, and I just wanted to point out for the record as well that there are other drivers as well in terms of the design, you know, from the developer's perspective, there's obviously, you know, that the design is driven by the the overall marketability and future intended buyers in mind and density requirements and and trying to meet those goals as well. So there's, there's not just one factor to be taken into consideration as to why the site was designed in this way. Obviously, as as we've discussed through Frank's testimony, there are a number of contributing factors which led to this particular design. But I think it's important at this point that we hear from the site engineer, particularly as to what also drives the overall design of the site, as well as our landscape architect and our planner, because we're only getting one fourth of the true picture of why this design was done in this fashion. And I I feel as though we continue to argue the same points and are arguing in a circle where perhaps it it will become more clear or we can resolve some of the issues that we seem to be struggling with as we get through and further into the testimony.
Okay, that sounds good, sounds reasonable.
Irene, this is Doug McQueen, who is asking questions from the public, I don't have any other questions for right now.
Thank you, that's what I was just going to ask, okay.
Jack Serpico, Mr. McQueen, last spelling your last name, capital M C, capital Q U E E N. Mr. McQueen?
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. McQueen.
That's correct, Mr. Serpico, the spelling is correct.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and next person with their hand raised is Adrian Smith, go ahead and ask your question.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for the presentation, this is Adrian Smith, I live at 601 Heck Street. I'm in the Monroe, another I-Star development across the street from this development. And I I I wanted to also just ask a couple of questions relating to this. I do have an interest in the open space and how the building and the open space interact. So I, if if you can assure me that I'll be able to ask my questions later, I will wait for the rest of the presentations and ask my questions later if that would help the overall conversation. Did anybody hear me?
Yes, go ahead and ask your question and and we'll determine.
I just asked, my question was, I will hold my questions if I can be assured that I will be able to answer, ask my questions later if they want to go on with the presentation by the landscape architect and the planner and the engineer.
This is, if your, if your question is related to the 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 open space only, then we can, you know, we can wait for the landscape architect. But if you have questions related to the layout of the buildings and the the architectural design, you can go ahead and ask a question now.
Okay, I I'll go ahead then, and then you can tell me whether we need to wait. So my my questions are really about whether the architect, and I'm sorry I didn't get all the names, whether they were were able to explore an option where the buildings acknowledged the uniqueness of the corner that was brought up by Mr. Galpo, I think Eric, on the planning board. And also, I mean, I, in my experience, I, you know, I have a little bit of experience living in New York City with the Flatiron Building, which clearly acknowledges a corner in an interesting way. Might not be the best building in the city, but there are ways of of dealing with, architecturally dealing with a corner. There are also ways that where the open space becomes the asset, where instead of denying it with a heavy landscape along the edge of Cookman and basically trying to block off the buildings from the commercial street that connects the entertainment district with the downtown, you actually acknowledge that relationship. We've heard a lot about the building and how it works, but then they've got planting all in front of it that blocks the building. So how are you even going to be able to see the three or floors, three or four stories if you have 30-foot trees in front of it? So that's what I don't understand is how these buildings actually relate to Cookman Avenue, I I don't think they do. So that's, that's my main question, were there options explored that showed the buildings relating to the corner?
I can certainly answer part of that question, and you probably have heard me say the same thing several times. But our building is not fronting on Cookman, the majority of our structure is set back in.
That wasn't my question though, my question was, did you explore options?
I'm gonna get to it, once, once we determined that that corner was not to be used for building, that it was going to be a public give back, then we went in particular way with the design. Certainly, I agree, and my firm has done this in different conditions, we we design buildings. And you can make very interesting buildings with the the corner as, just as Cookman and Heck creates. However, in this case, it's public space.
So why can't a building front on public space? Why can't it acknowledge the value of the asset that the public space is with a well-designed, you know, having, you have a landscape architect on board that could probably design a wonderful combination that 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 actually worked together with the architecture and the landscape architecture?
To do that, you would have to turn the orientation of the building. And with that turn and orientation, you would lose the, quite a few of the structures that now currently face on Heck. So we thought having a a good portion of these facades face on Heck was a better solution than having them face on the park.
Yeah, I think it's, I I I agree with Mr. Alpo that this, Galpo, that that just doesn't acknowledge the commercial and the importance of Cookman Avenue, it's just, anyway. And I have one, I have a couple other questions then, if that's the answer for that one. I wondered why, why the western and northern yards along Heck Street and on Asbury are so narrow? And then the the yards on the eastern building are are much deeper, they're about double the depth. So that you have these buildings right on the street on Asbury and Heck Street. And then when there's a private enclave of a nicely landscaped walkway, then the yards get bigger and the buildings have a more private feel, instead of acknowledging the nice, instead of acknowledging the way many buildings in Asbury Park have a nice larger front yard. These these front yards are really narrow and 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 small.
Well, I I think multifamily buildings typically don't have large front yards, what we've done is we've.
The ones at the Veeve and at the Hovnavian behind this building have much, they have almost doubled the size of the front yards, yours is.
Yeah, we've, we've tried to, and they're not necessarily successful on a particular point that I'm going to make that. Our ground floor is residential, we wanted some interaction between both Asbury Avenue and Heck Street. And by having the opportunity to enter the buildings at those points, very small yard, buffering the facade from the sidewalk, we think was a better solution than setting everything back further from Heck. We we think, and it's, it's been.
Why is it better?
For urban interaction, this, this, as it been pointed out, is not the suburbs. So with that in mind, we have tried to keep these facades as close as reasonably possible to this, to the front street. If you live in the Monroe, yours is very similar, yours is very.
Well, we have a, it's a multifamily building, it's not townhouses, that's very different, it's an apartment building.
You don't have that interaction that we were looking for, with a townhome, you have the the possibility of multiple entrances, not just one main entrance, therefore, multiple entrances can be you access from the street. And again, to bring more street life, we think this is a much better solution than having a front yard. And as your point toward the the section of the east, there is no street there. So the more buffer we can give to whatever project will happen later on, the better.
For the private, yeah, okay. That's all I, yeah, that's all I have, yeah, I mean, I I'd like to hear more about the landscape and the interaction between the landscape and the building from the the future testifiers.
Thank you for your questions, okay, next, um, next person is phone number ending in 3350, go ahead and speak.
Yeah, hi, Ernest McNoly, of 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey, the Sandtender. A resident homeowner in Asbury Park 15 years, and I spend a lot of time on Cookman and around this whole area. And my question is for the architect now. And is it correct that you stated that although questions are about the possibility of more frontage, let's say on Cookman, or in general for this project, that it's really a moot point? Because it's already been decided and approved that they're not going to face, that the sides are going to face Cookman. So is that a fact? Because if that's a fact, then I don't really have any need to ask questions about the sides facing Cookman and most of the fronts facing inward to create like a compound. So are we still at the point where if enough people ask enough questions of you, asking enough for possible alternative pivoting of the fronts of these townhomes, or is that just off the table anyway?
Well, I wouldn't answer that.
You understand what I mean?
I think I do.
Let him answer the question, let him answer the question.
Yeah.
You know what?
Sorry, I I think I do, however, I'm here to discuss the application as hopefully you see it. I'm not here to discuss and and present alternate designs. I'm here to talk about the positive attributes of this particular application, which I think are numerous. And I I do think some of the points you made aren't exactly accurate. So hopefully you can see the drawing and and I can answer them more specifically with my cursor. But again, I I keep going back to, it's the majority, the vast majority of our quote unquote side facades are not facing Cookman. Majority of our, of the property that is part of this bigger parcel, inclusive of the outdoor, of the public space, it's the public space that we're fronting on, not Cookman.
Mr. Serpico, can I speak now or no?
Sure.
Oh, thank you. So we we are talking about the the side of these townhomes. Particularly, it seems like me and most people have an interest of how that'll feel, walking down Cookman East, on the one side Wesley Grove with everybody's terrace front door, people coming and going, it seems like it's part of the neighborhood. And then on our right, on our left will be a complex that is sort of turned into itself. And and we just see the the sides, now, I I'm sure that those buildings facing Cookman, there's going to be windows on the sides of the of the walls of these townhomes. But the point is, it 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 takes away, it almost makes it feel like.
Excuse me, you gotta ask questions, you're testifying, ask a question, this is question and answers, this isn't testifying. You'll get a chance to comment later, but you gotta ask questions.
You know, you know what it is, every time I try to, you know, you disturb my trend of thought and it's.
At, well, you don't ask questions, you characterize questions by testifying. And I keep telling you at every meeting we have not to testify when you're asking questions.
Mr. McNoly, you've been muted, I'm going to unmute you now so you can ask a specific question, go ahead.
No, I I'm not going to because of Mr. Serpico's consonant.
Okay, thank you very much, I've muted.
Get out of order, move on, it's it's on me, it's not on the board, it's on me.
Thank you, I have no more questions from the audience or the attendees.
I'm sorry, you said there are no more questions?
No more.
Thank you, okay, Ms. Porter, you can call your next witness.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, next I would like to call Sean Delaney for Bowman Consulting, our civil engineer. Jack, you're here.
Yes.
Would you like to square?
Oh, Sean, how are you?
I'm good.
You sound like you're the testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do, Sean S E A N, last name Delaney, D E L A N Y, it's spelled.
I was writing your name down while, instead of looking, sorry.
Okay, it's spelled incorrectly under under my my picture, so there's no E at the end in the last name, D E L A N Y, so.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Bowman was previously qualified as part of the subdivision application.
Yes.
Mr. Delaney.
Yes.
Oh, did I, Mr. Delaney, yes, thank you.
You lost me there for a second.
Mr. Delaney was previously qualified as part of our subdivision application. So, you know, we're seeking to have the board continue to have him as an expert in the field of site engineering.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. Delaney, can you please begin your presentation by speaking to the existing conditions of the property?
Certainly, so. The overall site, I'm going to, what I'm showing up here is the exhibit A3, the major subdivision plan that was printed at the last hearing, I'll reference this as part of the existing conditions. The existing site composes 24 lots bounded by Asbury Avenue to the north, Cookman Ave to the south or or in the south and east, and Heck Street to the west. Totals 179,800 square feet approximately, identified as blocks 3203, lots 1 to 19, 3206, lots 1 to 4, and 3801 Lot 1, it's currently an undeveloped site. And it does have some streetscape improvements that have been installed on Asbury Avenue and along Heck Street. The Cookman Ave streetscape has not been created so far to date. In terms of the zoning, it's, as was stated earlier, it's in the waterfront redevelopment area, the prime renewal area, and within the Wesley Lake Village and Neighborhood portion of the prime renewal project. With regards to the pro- proposed development, I'm going to reference the subdivision plan again, as talked about. As I spoke about on the May 18th hearing, the site is proposed to be subdivided into five lots. Three of the lots, lots 101, 103, and 105 will will contain the proposed 48 residential units. Lot 104 at the corner of Cookman and Heck will be where the public open space is located. And Lot 102, which is the remainder of the triangle piece, will contain the, will be reserved for a future development that will, at some future point, will come before the board for approvals. So this portion, the proposed development of the site and the lots 101, 103, and 105, as Mr. Murner Vee talked about, approximately 2.04 acres on the site, and it take, it covers about 50% of the overall subject property. Moving on to next page, next sheet, this is part of exhibit A2. This is sheet four, the the overall site plan shows the relationship of the 48 residential units in the three buildings and the site improvements to the remainder of the lot and and of the site. So the development will be on the western portion of the project, just west of the intersection with Asbury Avenue and Berg Street in that location.
This is some Alexis Taylor, I think you're still on sheet one.
Yeah, you're showing A3 as opposed to A2.
Right.
I'm, oh, is that, I moved, oh, where's my screen, all right, I apologize, give me one second. There's my, let me try this again, and I moved it in the middle of it and. Yeah, I moved it in the middle of it and, uh, are you seeing the, uh, fourteen? Okay. I, I think I moved it in the middle of it to a different screen on my, at home. And when I moved it, it didn't come with me. So I apologize. So first, first one I was talking about was the subdivision. Next one, uh, A two is the overall site plan sheet for fourteen of the plans that were submitted, showing the relationship of the proposed development on the western half of the site, future lot on to the, to the eastern remaining triangle portion and the, um, open space area in the lower southwest corner, as part of this project. Moving to next sheet, which is, whoops, move back one. The layout dimensioning plan on sheet five of fourteen. It shows a more, uh, blown up area of the proposed, uh, development that we're talking about. As Mr. Mervini talked about, we have three buildings on the site, each with sixteen units. That will be, that will be, that will be developed in three phases, um, that I'll talk about a little further on. Starting, so phase one, we'll actually talk about right now. Phase one consists of the, uh, building number two, which actually that we've identified fronting on Heck Street or with its long face along Heck Street. Um, phase two would be building number three, which is to the east of building, uh, two, um, located along, uh, facing the long face facing the future development lot. Phase three, building number one, located along Asbury Avenue to the north side of the site. And it's basically, uh, as was previously testified in the subdivision hearing two, we are subdividing the lots for environmental purposes, and they will be all reconsolidated into a single lot, um, once all of the approvals and construction has been completed um, on the subject property. Um, once again, the open space lot located at the southwest corner and the remainder lot, uh, to the, to the east of the proposed development. It's noted that the proposed residential use is a permitted use, uh, within the redevelopment plan. As Ms. Porter pointed out again, um, as part of the subdivision, we did ask for some minor, uh, deviations um, from the, uh, bulk standards of the waterfront redevelopment plan. Won't go into specific details as, as I did that last, uh, last hearing, but lot area for the, um, open space doesn't meet the fifteen thousand square feet. The lot frontage of that same lot, lot one point oh four along Heck Street, uh, is short of the hundred and fifty feet, hundred feet required. And there's also a, a slight, a length of the frontage along Heck Street for building number one that fronts on Asbury is also just shy of the hundred foot, minimum. So getting into the inner workings of the, the site plan, uh, development. Um, I'm gonna start out with, uh, the parking for the development. Um, the waterfront redevelopment plan requires one point five spaces per residential unit for seventy-two total. We have provided, uh, ninety-six, um, total for the, for the application. That consists of one garage space and one driveway space for each unit, uh, in the proposed development. Um, and all of the garages, as Mr. Mervini talked about, are all oriented toward the interior of the site and are not facing the uh, perimeter walkways and pedestrian areas, uh, surrounding the, the subject property. Um, should also be noted that there's no parking allowed, uh, on the internal roadways. Um, so all the parking for the residents will be either in the garage or in their driveway. Guest parking, if they can't fit in the, in the garage area, they'll, they will, you know, have to use the public parking spaces um, surrounding the, the properties on the adjacent roads, which was contemplated as part of the redevelopment plan back in the day. So as stated, and continuing with that, as stated in the waterfront redevelopment plan, um, D E P is part of the CAFRA approval. They require two spaces. It was, uh, approved at one point five spaces, bases per unit with the additional half a space, basically being allowed to be, to occur on the on-street parking areas along the adjacent roadways throughout the waterfront redevelopment area. Due to the approval for the redevelopment plan and the, the CAFRA's approval of the reduced parking, it, this goes with that the RSI standards that would have typically governed residential development um, have been superseded with the, um, the waterfront redevelopment plan and would have been the diminished exception that would have been required for development was, was, they essentially effectively worked out back when the redevelopment plan was adopted. With regards to access to the site, um, we're proposing a single, uh, two-way access drive off of Heck Street. Heck Street is a one, as you're aware, Heck Street is a one-way street traveling from north to south, from Asbury down towards Cookman Avenue. So vehicles entering the site or needing access to the site would come off of Asbury Avenue or, or directly come down Heck Street, turn into the subject property and access their, um, driveways or garage areas. As they leave the site, whoops, too far. As, as they leave the site, same thing. They would come out, exit out to the main access, access drive, make a left onto Heck Street, head south towards Sewell and Cookman Avenue, to, to, uh, access other parts of the city. The internal driveway, uh, is twenty-four feet in width off of Heck Street up to the internal intersection area. From that point, the driveways have been reduced, or sorry, the internal alleys have been reduced to twenty feet for the continuation in the eastern direction, uh, and then for the entire length down uh, to the south between buildings two on, on the east, west side and building three on the east side. That was, uh, originally the design should call for twenty-four foot driveways. And one of the comments that were received from the TRC, uh, meeting was the, to include a sidewalk along some of the frontages of the, uh, townhouses in order to provide pedestrian access up and down to keep them from, keep the residents from walking within the streets. The alleyway to, the alleyway is sufficient and permitted per RSI's regulations. So we shrunk the, the two portions of the road down, added a four-foot wide sidewalk along building one to the north along, uh, along its driveways and building two on the west side along their, uh, driveway locations. Um, there'll be a flush curb along those areas. So, and it will, the sidewalks will be reinforced. So vehicles can drive across them if need be. But, uh, don't believe that they will be necessary, uh, for that purpose. In all other areas on the site that do not have driveways on them, the rest of the curb is a six-foot face, a six-inch face curbing to prevent vehicles from, uh, jumping the curbs into, uh, other sidewalk areas or, uh, landscaped areas that are proposed at the end of the cul-de-sac, at the end of the, the alleys, I should say. And believe that the, the single access point to the site is sufficient, uh, to the number of units, the layout that we've, uh, proposed, um, as well as the limited amount of traffic that will be generated, uh, we anticipate to be generated from the development being a townhouse development. Um, and this could be further, the, the circulation on site is further examined, um, as I go to the next exhibit, which is exhibit A ten, the vehicle circulation plan is consists of two sheets. Sheet one is, uh, passenger vehicles and sheet two is fire, uh, for a fire truck. Um, both were dated four twenty-nine, two thousand twenty, referring to sheet one of two of that exhibit for the passenger vehicles. The exhibit shows a car traveling down Heck Street, turning into the site. And we picked two driveways to, uh, access, which are the ones at the end of the alleys. Car will be able to pull in to their garage and driveway, park in front, back out, the wheels would, would basically come to the end of the, the curb lines with the back of the vehicles extending over it and then be able to access back out to Heck Street without uh, encroaching upon the sidewalk along building one in a similar fashion on building two. Cars would come down, make the turn in, would back out, uh, once again to the curb line and be able to turn, um, and continue onto things without the wheels, uh, having to drive over the sidewalk, um, of the property. So once again, the, the full height curbs at the end of those will prevent those vehicles backing out from jumping the curb into the, um, other site improvements and landscaping areas that are, that are present at those locations.
May I, may I interrupt you one second? Sorry, this is Eric Gallup, a board member speaking. What is the dimension of, um, that internal, um, north-south street? From, yeah, from where your cursor is now, uh, was.
It's all right. I'm gonna go back to the other exhibit, exhibit because it, I think it shows. So the internal drive coming in up to the first intersection is twenty-four feet.
Oh, no, I mean the length. I'm sorry.
Oh, the length?
Yeah.
It's, uh,
So from that point where it's, where your radius is fifteen?
Yep. It's, uh, it's less than, it's less than two hundred and fifty feet.
Can you zoom out a little bit? I just want to make sure that we're clear about. So you've got, yeah, that point. So I'm asking the dimension from the, from, yeah, the near side to, all the way down at the bottom of the site.
It's less than, it's less than two hundred and fifty feet. I know that. Give me one second.
But a car, so some, some number of cars are going to be traveling two hundred plus or minus feet with their headlights facing down.
Correct. And, and Mr. Left will talk about if you're getting on to, uh, headlight glare onto Cookman Avenue, Mr. Left can talk about some landscaping that's.
I just was using headlights as an orientation method. So, but you have, you know, front-facing traffic coming toward Cookman Avenue.
Correct.
At a dead, at a dead end.
Correct. Which, which is, which is a permitted, uh, permitted, you know, the, the layout that we have here is permitted based upon RSI's, uh, requirements. You know, anything less.
It's just a, but it's also that, you know, that dead end faces the, 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 the remainder lot, correct?
This dead end up top faces the remainder lot to the east, correct?
And the public remainder lot to the.
Bottom one, yes. It, it faces, comes down and faces the, a portion of that open, uh, proposed open space lot. Yes.
And the dimension of that, and the dimension of that north-south street is somewhere in the range of two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet.
Correct.
Which is just coincidentally close to the short length of a New York City block.
I do know for RSIS, for a multi-family, what's, what's, what's what I'm thinking? A multi-family, um, uh, it's not, it's not a, a multi-family court, um, as they define it, has a maximum length of three hundred feet before you have to worry about, putting in some kind of a turnaround, whether it be a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac.
Oh, no. Oh, God, I forbid.
So yeah, I go up to three hundred feet in accordance with the residential regulations of New Jersey. But yes, it's about two hundred.
I just, I'm, I'm just concerned, uh, you know, again, about how the engineering that you have to use to accommodate the circulation of getting cars, cars primarily in and out of the site creates a condition where your dead ends are hitting the most public portions of the site. So you can.
Okay. And questions or can I proceed or?
No, I know it's, I, yeah, you can proceed. I think this is in character with the other comments on the architectural plan is that the site engineering is also creating a condition for some of the, the, um, relaxations that you're looking for. If the fronts of the buildings were facing Cookman Avenue, you wouldn't have a dead end on your public space.
Understood. I'm going to, um, the second, uh, page, sheet two of two of exhibit A ten. Um, we did run an emergency vehicle, um, through the site, a fire truck, uh, forty-seven foot long ladder truck, um, onto the site for, to make sure that if, if, if they needed to, they could access the property, um, safely without, without, uh, encroaching onto the driveways and, and, and impacting any cars that may be parked within those. Shows a car once again, a fire truck once again down Heck Street, coming in, making the turn um, at the intersection, does not cross over the curb lines, does not cross over the, the curb lines in the driveways. Obviously comes down, there would be a backup movement to do a K-turn at the, uh, the T-intersection at the top and then back out and coming out, back out to, um, Heck Street. There is a, if you zoom in, if you looked at it, there is a slight encroachment on to the, the sidewalk in this area, but that is the vehicle overhang and not the tires associated with it. So just be the bumpers and stuff that'll be swinging, you know, a foot or two over that sidewalk, still would not impact the vehicles. That will be parked in the, through the garage, in the garage, sorry, the driveways. Should also be noted too that the, um, you know, this is only if the fire trucks have to come into the site. Um, they could have flexibility to, you know, access your park along the three roads and gain access into the, the sites um, as well to fight fires, um, for the subject property. With regards to going, whoops, let's go back up to back up to exhibit A two with the layout dimensioning plan. Uh, with regards to deliveries that will be made for the site, um, there is no formal loading zone is proposed and none is required for the, the city ordinances uh, for residential development of this nature. Deliveries to the site will either pull in, utilize the, uh, the garage, the driveway spaces if they're available, or they can park in the on-street spaces, um, and access the, uh, the doors or walk around, um, as needed to get into the, uh, the development to, to deliver their packages. Or if they do happen to drive in, they'll park, drop a package, turn around and leave, uh, in a very quick time. No, no extended times are anticipated. Obviously for, um, moving in and those kind of things, delivery, those kind of delivery vehicles for, for moving, they would utilize the driveway, uh, garage spaces, um, for those types of vehicles, uh, coming in. Garbage and recycling for the site. Containers would be stored within the, the garages for, of each of the units. So no external, um, storage is proposed. Uh, the applicant is proposing to, or the association would, would contract with a private hauler to pick up that trash and recycling. Um, so the vehicles would pull in, you know, pick up the, pick up the trash to the thing much, much the same way as the, uh, emergency vehicle or passenger vehicles will pull in, come in, either back in, back down, pick up along the way and then exit back out to Heck Street. Um, and then pickup will occur as often as needed because it's a private hauler. So if there's, um, a, a larger demand of more frequency needed, you know, particularly during holidays or so, they can change the delivery schedule as needed to, uh, accommodate the amount of trash that's being generated from, from, from amount of trash and recycling for the site. There is a, I know, requirement for, um, storage for up to four weeks of recycled material, uh, within the building. Um, and, uh, based on the proposed development, um, that is not, that will most likely not be accommodated because of these, the, the storage within the garages. But I would, yeah, so I guess a waiver would be required for that. However, I, I believe it's justified and, and Mr. Hughes will talk about this more, um, and the justifications uh, during his testimony, uh, I believe it's justified because we are controlling the pickup of those and it's not city pickup. If, if it was a city situation where, um, that was out of our control, then I believe that's a viable, um, requirement of the ordinance. But this is being, it's controlled by the, uh, the applicant. The pickup times can be, uh, more frequent, which would not necess, would not necessitate the need for that four-week time period. Getting on to pedestrian circulation, which is, uh, been a big talking point, uh, for the site as well. Obviously you have these, the sidewalks that are located, the public sidewalks that are located along the three roadways. Um, internally, uh, we, as I mentioned, we have a sidewalk along, uh, the building one on the north and building two on the west sides along their driveway locations, four feet in width. The one on, uh, in front of building one connects at Heck Street and runs and connects to the, the proposed sidewalk uh, in the muse areas as people are talking, talking it between Cookman Avenue and Asbury Avenue, uh, north and south. In addition, there's another sidewalk off of Heck Street, which comes in on the south side of the entrance drive to a gang, um, cluster mailbox unit in that location right before the intersection. And that, that extends all the way down south along the driveways of building two to the end. Um, we've, we've actually taken that extended across the, the dead end of the alley there, and it also brought it out in a five-foot. And it also brought it out in a five foot sidewalk out to Cookman Avenue directly. So there's a direct access for anyone, including the public, from Cookman Avenue to walk in. Off this area and then access to the site to get up to Hex Street. In that location. The final sidewalk that was talked about is a five foot meandering sidewalk on the eastern side of the development. That connects Cookman Avenue to Asbury Avenue. There's a fence along the eastern pride that does extend. From the 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 proper prose property lines down to the fencing that is. Around the outdoor areas of each of the units. That is a wooden lattice fence that can be either painted or stained with a gate. For access by residents to the development only along that sidewalk. The sidewalk along building one extends to that that sidewalk as well. So a resident walking in can walk up that that area, walk up and then walk across the frontage to building one. Or if they want, they can come in off the the other Cookman Ave sidewalk and walk into the building two. Point. So public access to the site. Is there off of Cookman Avenue to get to from Hex Street to Cookman Avenue, it's just not provided from. Cookman Avenue up to Asbury Avenue, as we felt. Due to the alignment of the building three doorways. And the separation with the future building on the site. That we wanted this this a little bit more. A little more privacy, more security for these residents. Coming up this way and and not having public just continuously walk through as a cut through. Around or from Asbury Avenue, Cookman Ave. Which we don't, I guess, in previous times, there were some roads up through here, but there was not a cut through at this location. Previously was further down to the east in a right away that has been eliminated. I think it's opposite St. James Place all the way down at that location. So this this had never been, this was never previously proposed for a public access. Between Berg Street and Cookman Avenue. I know that the TRC had expressed a recommendation to provide as public, but. As we look more and more about it, it just didn't warrant itself in our mind. Due to the the, I guess, the security we are looking for on this side of the eastern side of the development. We felt that it felt there was a better, a more appropriate option for it to be a private entrance in that location. The other reason for the the access point over here, too, is allowing, as was Mr. Minnavari, Minnavini talked about. Not all of the units have access on the. Let's say called the non-garage side of the the building. Or the, or call it a front of the building facing the streets or that eastern walkway. They have to come in through the the driveway side to get into their access based upon the way the units are aligned through in the inside the the structure. So this is all these doorways are only access to aid of the units on the ground floor, as are similar to the other units. Around the perimeter of the site. What's next? All this, all the sidewalks throughout the site would be designed for ADA or designed for ADA accessibility. As well as the the driveways access to the units will also be designed for ADA accessibility. As I mentioned, the, you know, the access to the interior units. Doorways are the only access points into the building since they do not have a secondary access out on the the rear, they can go into the garage or they can come in through their the front entrance, so. All of those points have to be accessible for anybody who parks in the driveway, so. The the driveways and all that will be AD accessible at two percent maximum slopes. Talked like this in terms of street furniture, I mentioned that earlier that there's nothing installed right now along. Asbury or Hex Street and Cookman Avenue does not have the the street frontage. Streetscape designed yet as part of, has not been installed. We are proposing right now a trash disposal bench and a bike rack at the intersection of Asbury and Heck and a similar one down by the. Intersection of Cookman and Heck, if additional. Features or streetscaping items, furniture required will comply with the. The infrastructure component report that's been prepared and approved for the entire waterfront. We are not proposing right now to do the improvements along Cookman Avenue. Due to the limited frontage for the site. That will be proposed as part of the future development. Our proposal is to do that, I guess, have that fall upon the future development where the entire streetscape can be constructed at one time. To add all the the pavers, the the trees and lights in accordance with the infrastructure component report.
May I ask a question? This is Alexis Taylor. May I ask a question particular to this diagram?
Yes.
So there are many fences. When you go into the kind of small writing and different types of fences proposed, it's confusing to me, there's a point at which. And I am gonna have you go into the details of what the fences are, but. There's a point at which you say end wooden fence and begin metal fence, but there are actually three fences, I think, that come together. So I'm confused about what, yeah, that point right there. Can you explain what is the wooden fence and what's the metal fence?
Certainly, the wooden fence and I have a detail that I'll show later. Let me see if I can get them.
I think the detail's on twelve. Yeah, but okay, you have it there.
Moving there, there it goes. I think this is it. Nope, that's not.
At twelve, yeah, two.
I put these in order how I'm going through, so I gotta.
Okay.
Until the end, there it is.
There, yeah.
All right, so the wooden fence. Is something that would be similar to like a wooden lattice fence like this, and this will be along the eastern property line and will come along the. Southern and northern. Well, then come, sorry. As it hits down the roadways at Cookman Avenue and Asbury Avenue will travel west till it intersects the. The privacy fence detail is a poor, unfortunately, PDF doesn't show it really well.
Yeah.
A a it's a it's a metal fenced with horizontal slats, but it's see-through. There's thin slats that has see-through portions all the way through it to allow. You know, people on the streets along the areas to look through it, so it's not a solid fence. That was a comment that was. You see, we didn't reduce the height of it to forty two inches. Like we were up at six feet before, but this this fencing, this metal fencing defines the courtyard. Oops, I can probably look at it right here. Defines the. The these courtyard areas or these rear outdoor seating areas associated with all of the units.
Okay.
So it just happened that this one because of the close proximity to here, which originally this was one point two feet, if you recall. We actually pushed it back to four and a half by reconfiguring the the driveway to twenty feet and doing some other things. But then the that that metal fence comes down the side, hits. Cookman Avenue and then travels along and and runs the perimeter of. The the outdoor area for the unit, the wooden fence will pick up on that corner, the wooden lattice fence and comes. Easterly to the corner of the proposed property line, runs up. All the way to the other the other part and then comes back to where it intersects that metal fence again.
Yeah. So I think I have a sense of the metal fence from some of the renderings, but just given the lack of resolution in that particular. Example, it would help. And you said that one's forty two inches?
This, yeah, this one is forty two inches and the, I believe, the wooden fence, if I remember correctly, is.
Six feet.
But there is also a. With respect to the metal fence, there is a clear detail, it's an entire sheet, it's actually part of exhibit A one. I can look up this, it's actually page seventy one of exhibit A one, that will give you a fuller picture of the metal fence.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then, but with regards to that wooden fence, that example that you've shown there, that's not a six foot wooden lattice fence, I would guess, just based on the height of the trees.
Probably not, though, it'll extend it'll extend up higher, correct? It is, this is the, this is more for the type of fence that you'll see the the lattice and see through fifty percent. So it's not a full screen fence, it's it's not a solid fence that would prevent the air, air or views from looking through it, so.
And that's proposed all along Cookman?
No, no, that is only proposed. As opposed for the short stretch between the metal fence on the end of the building. And the and the proposed property line, so you're looking about, you know, twenty feet at, you know, twenty point nine, twenty one feet along that side. And then on the southern side along Cookman, here it's. I have a dimension, but it's only from the property corner to the fence here, so it's only this piece as well. This is metal fence and then from here all the way down, the rest of Cookman is completely open. There's no fence here.
Okay, I just might reconsider that wooden latest, I don't think it's in the vernacular of anything else you have around, I mean, it's suburban. But I don't even know that it's in the vernacular of anything in Asbury Park. But that's more of a comment than a question.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. All right, so now we go back up to back up to A two, sheet nine of fourteen and talk about lighting for the site. We are proposing four different light fixtures on the property. Three. Pole mounted lights, one at the intersection at Hex Street for the main entrance to the driveway coming in, one at the internal intersection. And then one at the end of the alleyway on the southern side of the property. Those light fixtures proposed are the same light fixtures that are along the existing streetscape. Existing, which are the nautical style goose neck type fixtures, sixteen feet to the. To the fixture height eighteen plus to the over the top of the pole, almost nineteen feet LED fixture, so it's. Because of the limited number, we didn't want to propose something that was different than the surroundings. So we did to try and blend in with the the existing. Light fixtures that occur currently across Asbury Avenue and Hex Street and will most likely be installed along Cookman Avenue as well. In addition, we have five bollard lights located evenly spaced along. The sidewalk in the muse area, once again, LED lights. Those bollards, small little bars, send a light just light to to illuminate the paths, but not. Provide, you know, a bright area in terms of these people's yards. Not too bright that it becomes a glare issue along the air enough for enough, we believe, is for safety along the areas. Through this development. In addition. Those also are LED fixtures as well. There are also two types of building mounted lights that are proposed. At the garage, above each garage and above the doors, next to the doorways on the. Also the street, three frontages and the muse area for the access to the buildings. There are a goose neck type fixture, looking at, sorry, page sheet fourteen of fourteen, the detail sheets. It's a large wall lantern LED that goes next down over the garage areas. And then at the internal doorways. Along along the path up into it, I'm gonna zoom in a little closer. Maybe seem a little better. So as you come in from your, from the internal alleyway, alleys, driveways. And the garages, you're walking outside, there's one light that'll be midway. Up into the into towards the doorways and there's another fixture that's located on each. Next to each of the doorway entrances in the locations. They are all the. Another wall lantern, a rectangular type of fixture, downcast light only, once again, an LED type fixture. These fixtures are also proposed on the upper level on the mezzanine areas. That were that are being repaired up here, fixture B is the same type of, is that fixture again, located out the doorway entrances at the at the upper level. Of the for the outdoor spaces on top of the buildings, you can see him on on both. Rear façades and the front façades for those units on, this is now, apologize, this is exhibit A nine, the lighting exhibit that was dated. It's dated seven nine, two thousand and nineteen. This was prepared as part of the TRC and and city council presentations. To show the lighting that would that on the buildings that would be that was being proposed and nothing has changed since those times. That she one of two and on sheet two of two is the two side yard side sides, once again, showing the couple little fixtures on top of the building. That illuminate the doorways and exit entrance points to those. Outdoor areas and spaces that are on the the upper level of the building. So I believe we believe that the site is designed to provide the the lighting needed for access and safety, it's typical of a residential area. Especially through here, we didn't want to over over illuminate the the site. Wanted to look like a surface parking lot on the interiors or exteriors around the site. So so that was that was the the primary goal through through the property, so anywhere you're walking, you can see the light fixture, you're you're, you know, two hundred feet most. Essentially from a light fixture to another light fixture. For the pole mounted lights and then the 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 spacing of the bollards are more more along the lines of fifty foot spacing along the the back airs. There are lights along the building that if those are turned on, it'll further illuminate some of those areas. And the lights along the garages are also illuminate those areas outside as well, but that can be controlled on a timer or whatnot for. Throughout the the. For the residents who are who are living in these facilities, these residents, these units. So I I believe, I know, I believe lighting levels are sufficient, I know there have been some comments from the the board professionals, both the engineer and the planner. Requesting some potential additional lighting. You can provide some, if if it's needed, if they believe or the board believes additional lighting is needed, we can supplement some some extra lights in in locations. To provide a better coverage if that's if that's the the purview of the board. Next, I was gonna talk about fencing, but Alexis, you nicely led me into that already, so. I can pass that on to and go right to utilities that are proposed for the project. Zoom in a little further on this one. Still too far, apologize. So San Antonio Sewer is coming off of Cookman Avenue, there's an existing manhole, it's actually behind the curb line already. So we're not going out into the street to rip the street up for any reason. We're gonna reload relocate that mantle onto the site and it's gonna run and service extend the main further into the site to service the service the units. That has been reviewed and and approved by the city engineer already. They signed off on our TW application, TWA application, and that has been submitted and is under review by the DEP currently.
And John, you're referring to sheet seven of A two?
Sorry, yes, yes, sheet seven of A two, which is the utility plan. Thank you, Jen. The water service, we're proposing to connect in the connect to the water man is located along Hex Street, bring the water man into the site. And and tee it off to the two and it's along the two alleyways under the pavement. Servicing, you know, each individual building from the the driveway side of the facility. We are proposing two fire hydrants, one at each dead end of the. The alleyways essentially because it's a dead end line gives the fire department a chance to flush the line out effectively at those locations. Also a place for them to tap into if they need to to fight a fire. And they can access the, it can access another one down and on your Cookman, they can access if they had to from the. The street, run the hose up into it to to connect, connect in if need be. Electric and gas meters. File locations for for where the task will occurs are are still being are still being coordinated, but at the end of each of the buildings. On the the apparent, the the short areas or sides, as they've been referred to several times. We are proposing multiple meter banks of gas meters and electric meters. In those locations, they have, they are screened and Mr. Left will talk about that during his testimony regarding the landscaping. But they are on each end of the building. For the occasion, they've been split, so it's not, all the meters aren't in one location, they're split, if, you know, eight units on each side essentially. At most, we're trying to get about, you know, sixty, six to ten units on each side, gas, as he has been split, six and ten, and electrics are eight and eight on each side for that. In terms of the air conditioning units, I know that was some discussions we've had on on that as well. There are two air conditioning units located on the driveway side of all the buildings and that takes care of the. The units that are essentially have primary access on. The the interior or located on the interior courtyard portions of the building. There are also two units located on the. The other side of the building, the the other front where the patio patio areas are. Only two units, the units on the driveway side are stacked one on top of each other while the ones on the. The courtyard areas, patio areas are side by side, once again, screened up against the building with some screening and landscaping that Mr. Left will will talk more in depth about. Let's see, and now get getting into the stormwater for the site. Let's see, and now get getting into the stormwater for the site. So first first thing to notice, the pros development is currently not within a flood zone for the for the current FEMA effective maps on that are available for the city. Under proposed or under the Plymouth maps for the town. This is the limit line of the the X zone per se for the flood for the flood area. So everything inland or to the north of this line is not still would not be located within a flood zone. The the X zone is areas that are outside the hundred year stud, but still subject to you know, potential flooding to us to a minimal depth in those areas. So it would encompass some of the open space and a slim corner of the the lot one point oh five where building two is located.
May I, this is Eric Galoppo. Mentor. So just to talk about the location of the flood zone in relationship to the parcel that is being reserved for public use. Would you agree that it because that part that portion of the lot is in a flood zone is one of the other factors is why you chose it to be reserved for public space?
Yes, it's it's always a good thing to keep any kind of development of building development, vertical development outside of a flood zone.
Okay, agreed. I agree there. So so beyond the dimensionality of the architectural constraints and the engineering constraints, there are these very real concerns about building in a flood zone.
Correct.
And so that that flood zone happens to be located on that south.
On that one piece of corner to the try in the triangle intersection of Hook, Hack and Cookman. Correct.
Okay, so we have at least well, we have at least one reason for why that public space makes sense on the corner.
Correct. It's a man, it's a very, it's very valid because obviously there are other there are other criteria involved with building designs and elevations and things like that would be affected by a building that if it was if portion of was located in that flood zone. So so but yeah, it's 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 definitely areas you want to keep away from any kind of any kind of flood zone. But you but you still, as 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 you know, you still can build in a flood zone. There are just different requirements associated with it. So it doesn't preclude us from putting a building there, but the there are other other things that we have to talk about that would be impacting the buildings if if a building was placed in that flood zone.
Correct. Beyond beyond the challenging angle.
Yes.
For art for interior architecture at that point.
Correct. So.
I'm sorry, Mr. Delaney, to interrupt you. This is Irena. Can you just identify what page and document you're referring?
This is sheet seven. This is exhibit A two sheet seven of fourteen, the utility plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that's the first first and foremost, this is the flood elevation flood zones of the property. Other points, so so typically a development would have to comply with the stormwater management regulations in terms of quantity, quality and recharge. The CAFRA permit that was approved for the site talked about back then really only addressing the the water quality requirements, and that was done by the installation of several water quality treatment devices within the public right of ways and roadways throughout the waterfront area. It was determined that for the regulations that the because the site is located within planning area one metropolitan that the groundwater recharge is not required on the subject property. Therefore, you know, you're not proposing any any groundwater recharge facilities as part of this project. Obviously groundwater will occupy some of the landscaped areas and will be able to recharge on the ground. So there will be some recharge, but it's not a requirement to provide it on the subject property. As I mentioned, water quality is handled through the existing treatment devices that have been installed throughout the waterfront that gathers the runoff from the existing collection systems that are within the adjacent roadway systems prior to discharging to the water bodies, in this case to Wesley Lake that's located south of our our subject property. The other item that addresses stormwater quantity and excuse me. And that's something we'll I'll talk about a little bit more in in a few minutes as I define the system a little bit better on what we're doing. But for the the stormwater regulations, they do they do talk about what are calling analysis for quantity for title. Title, let's see, was it? Apologize, my mind is skipped. Talks about title flood flood zone areas. Have to look at the potential for runoff quantity, but only that, but only if the increased volume of stormwater runoff that is being discharged from the site, if there is any could increase flood damages that are below the point of discharge from the site. So I'll talk about that a little further in just a little bit. So currently as designed, the stormwater system on site proposes a stormwater collection system made up of inlets and pipes that collect runoff from the internal alleyway paved areas, sidewalks and driveways. It's graded down to inlets at the end of the the dead end portions. And then it's piped out to the existing inlets that are surrounding the development on Asbury Avenue and the pipe system on Heck Street. The roof drains, roof leaders from the buildings are also fully collected and connected into that pipe system for connection. So it's not that they're not being allowed to discharge that grade and flow across the paved areas or directly out to the existing roadway, they'll be captured internally to the collection system and piped off site. Couple more inlets are located along the muse area only because of the fact that the grading and tying into the existing grades on the other side created some high and low points through the property that we so we added them in there to make sure we can drain them properly and get out to those locations. So I mentioned, so let's say building one at the top along Asbury Avenue, the roof rain system collects, travels south to the proposed inlet and drainage system that we're proposing and runs out along with some lawn areas and the the paved areas in the alleyway internal alley out to the inlet located in Asbury Avenue. Buildings two and three, the roof drain systems all come along the front of the front of the building connecting into the inlets and mantle that are on the south side of that and are conveyed out to a proposed doghouse mantle that will be put over the top of the existing pipe system in Heck Street. And there's a small portion of runoff that is to the east of building three that does run over just overland onto Cookman Avenue and travels east eastward to an existing inlet down by Saint James Place or Saint James Street where it kicks there and then heads in a southerly direction. All of these, these stormwater collection systems ultimately end and discharge into Wesley Lake at three different locations, believe it or not. So you have the Heck Street system, which comes down Heck Street and continues along Heck Street and discharges right into the Wesley Lake on the south. As I mentioned, the system that hits in Cookman Avenue travels down to Saint James Place, runs south along Saint James Place and then connects into the discharges into Wesley Lake. And then the Asbury Avenue system travels east along Asbury Avenue, comes up Cookman Avenue to Wesley Lake Drive and then travels south along Wesley Lake Drive and discharges also into Wesley Lake. So the three different connection points. And the the existing site has that same breakout, existing grading takes the drainage patterns in three different directions under current conditions. So so as I mentioned, the site is located within a tidal flood hazard area. So to address the capacity and the discharge downstream, potential flooding downstream to the site. We looked at the discharge off site for the hundred year storm and compared that to the capacity of the pipe system that's in the roadway system for a twenty five year storm, because that's what the pipes were originally designed for back in two thousand and four. So if we are discharging a rate that's equal to or less than the capacity that the the inlets and pipes were handling from the original design. It's it it it's safe to say, in my opinion, that the there would be no impact downstream from this development, flood increased flooding downstream because we're putting the same amount of rate into the site that was that the pipes were originally designed for. So under twenty five year storm, obviously, if we're putting a hundred year storm into those pipes, a twenty five year storm would be substantially less than the flow that would be in there coming off our property. So for the discharge to Heck Street, that this corner right here. We do have a slight increase in runoff from the site for the hundred year storm compared to the twenty five in that system. However, as we go south along Heck Street, there are no downstream inlets or any other flow gathered in once you get past the intersection at the discharge into Wesley Lake. Because of that, you know, there's really no impact, any downstream properties, because there's no real additional flow coming into it. So the pipes do have a some some capacity available for some additional runoff. This would be pretty much the last piece I'd be going to it connecting into it from this from this site, from this development and faces north, I'll be running down into the into this area. So I believe that the there would be no impact to downstream properties due to the to the slight increase in flow that would be coming off the site on this on this site. And then and I want to point out too that the increase in flow, the drainage report compares existing conditions to proposed conditions. It also compares it to what was originally approved as part of the CAFRA permit on based upon a ninety percent impervious coverage on the site. So while there shows a significant increase in flow from existing to proposed conditions. The site was developed at some point, buildings were knocked down. So the runoff coming from the site, when you compare existing proposed is not really what was there years ago. That and should not be the the actual comparison to prove to show that the the site, the quantity aspects, you know, will be met for this title flood hazard area. I believe the the way we're doing it in term in terms of VP has has done this on a on a previous site by trying to read, you know, show that the flow for the hundred year storm into these areas is equivalent or less than the twenty five year storm. As long as there's pipe capacity in the pipe is a better way to show it. And and the stormwater report clearly shows that based on a ninety percent impervious and this site is less than ninety percent. I don't have the number in front of me off the top of my head. But the and because it's less than nine percent, it will have less flow coming off it than was originally anticipated as well as part of the planned development and CAFRA permit that was approved back in two thousand and four. Continuing on the discharge to Asbury Avenue. So this one, you know, we are adding some more, any more flow to this inlet up here. However, as you get into Asbury Avenue and further down the east side, you have a significant storm pipe located down the center of the road. It's not a circular pipe. It's a box culvert essentially runs down that way, connects into the the pipe at Kingsley Street and then out into Wesley Lake Drive. Currently, the pipe, based on the design, from my review of the the CAFRA permit way back when it was designed, it had additional capacity somewhere about ten CFS in that pipe over a twenty five year storm. So when we put the flow of our site in there, while we are increasing the flow downstream, that pipe is able to handle the additional capacity to convey it down into the south. Once again, I don't believe there'll be the effects of that. I don't believe there's a an issue that will cause downstream flooding conditions to to be exacerbated through that system. And then the last piece along Cookman Avenue, actually, the the runoff from our site is actually drainage area is reduced going to that point. So the the flow for the hundred year storm is actually less than the twenty five year storm going to the inlet in Cookman Avenue and then ultimately to Wesley Lake. So that is a clear example that the the flow of the site will not cause downstream flooding in that location. So at this point, I I guess the the couple of things less to talk about with this is we have submitted these plans to the DEP for as part of our CAFRA compliance, along with the stormwater report. They are currently reviewing that. We submitted that back at the end of February, beginning of March. We currently do not have any comments from them, but hope to have those soon. So we can address them and and make any revisions that may be necessary if if any are required. So don't know what what their comments may be. We've addressed the the analysis of this similar to what we did for the Asbury Park Beach Club and how they commented on that application. I feel that we have addressed the comments that they've asked for there the same way here satisfactorily. Mister, the board engineer, Mr. Victor has also stated his review letter that that is the last statement of one of his comments that the water quantity reductions may be appropriate for this for this project. You know, I would say pending the receipt, there's comments in the DEP. You know, if they appear that if they request some additional reductions that may be warranted on the site. You know, a potential for an underground system to help detain things on there is an option. But we would we would work with the DEP and the board engineer to provide the appropriate design to address this issue when it arrived, when when, you know, when we've received that feedback from the DEP. Unfortunately, we don't have that information right now. And so I don't know if they're going to come back with any additional comments above and beyond what what Mr. Victor has pointed out. And there's also been a comment, I guess, received from the West, a letter from the Wesley Lake Commission regarding the discharging and stormwater impacts to Wesley Lake. So as far in regards to that, I would say that the for this site alone, we've analyzed it and the impacts to it to Wesley Lake and believe that the pros developer will not result in any impacts to downstream, flooding of downstream properties from the discharge points for this. There may be other factors that may affect Wesley Lake that are not under the responsibility of this responsibility of this impact that are more of a global nature, and they did provide a report for some some multiple options for improvements to Wesley Lake that are really probably more under the lines of the associated with the the infrastructure component report in the city being involved and more global wide throughout the entire redevelopment area that that is beyond the scope and purview of this similar this single application. So while we can do some things on here, the the addressing the the global potential issues that that they've pointed out needs something beyond above and beyond what that this application is is providing at this time. Getting on to the next comment, next questions. I go to exhibit A six. You know, as part of any development, you're going to have a construction trailers and because the residential needs a sales trailer for development on the property. So we prepared an exhibit, a temporary sales. The temporary construction trail sales trailer plan, sheet one of one is exhibit A six. That is dated, I don't have a date, where's my date? One second. That is dated four eight, two thousand and twenty. It's called the temporary construction and sales trailer location plan prepared by my office. And this shows location of a construction trailer to be located on the phase three portion of the lot, lot one point oh one at the northwest corner of the site for the construction trailer. So structural vehicles enter the site directly through the stabilized entrance that is under review by the soil erosion, Freehold Soil Conservation District right by the entrance to put that there. The sales trailer, we've carved out an area that there'll be fenced. The the subject property will be fenced during construction. So we carved out a portion of that to put the sales trailer up in the northeast corner along Asbury Avenue. So it's separate, people accessing it would use the the on street parking areas right directly in front of it to come into the site. Once again, still on that lot one oh one, phase three development. As soon as the units would be available that they could use for a model or an office in there, this facility would be removed and relocated somewhere else as this development within the the phase three portion would begin. In addition to the site layout and dimensioning, it's grading to make sure the water drains away from the building, away from the sales trailer. And we provided a landscaping plan down at the bottom as well to along the the front of it to give it a good curb appeal from the from Asbury Avenue for driving by and people walking up and down the the street. And you know, this all ties in, as I mentioned, with the the phasing, phase one on lot one oh five, phase two on one oh And you know, this all ties in like as I mentioned with the the phasing, phase one on lot one oh five, phase two on one oh three and the final phase over here. On lot one oh one, putting this information, putting these these facilities on that final phase three, so they only have to move it. Put it install it once and remove it once as the phasing continues through the subject property. There. And then I guess the one of the other items that was discussed at the last meeting was related to subdivision was the timeline for the project. Associated with the the development and that was part of the the SDA agreement to exhibit A twelve. Ms. Porter talked about the additional excerpts related to construction were added. To the were submitted to the board in advance of this meeting for review. So going on to exhibit B that's contained in there. This was what the the schedule through the. The subsequent develops agreement had maintained. Obviously, the dates were passed those dates now due to the, you know, what what has occurred with the. Meetings and getting through the approval process through the through the city. So we were looking at a May first original time just to obtain a building permit starting on May fifteenth. Starting the first building a year later on on March fifteenth, I'm sorry, delivering the first building on March fifteenth. And then delivering the other two buildings at six month intervals after that. But the entire approval process from the date of obtaining building permits to the final construction sign off being a two year process. So. The schedule still is is. Is what we're looking for or we're proposing in accordance with the SDA to comply with that. The start date obviously is the only thing that that will change based upon when we. Obtain all our necessary approvals for this and be able to get to start the construction on the subject property. And with that. My other comments about regarding approvals, we will provide copies of all approvals upon receipt of them to the board. And then the professionals as part of the part of a compliance is if if the board so. Agrees to or determines to approve the application. And that's all I have for my direct testimony.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Before I open up the. Questions to the board members, just a point of order. So it's almost nine o'clock. Our meetings usually go about three hours. I'd like to take questions from the board and from the public and then. Continue this application to another meeting. I doubt we're going to finish tonight. We still have two more presenters. So I just want to get the board's opinion of that. And if you have a meaningful to that, Ms. Porter?
Yeah, Rick, this is Mike Manziel. I think we should absolutely finish all questions with Mr. Delaney, so we don't have to start with him again at the next.
Yes, yeah, especially while it's all fresh in our mind. Okay, so I will open it up to the board. Any any questions from the board members?
Jim Henry, I have several questions of Mr. Delaney. Going back to your. The sidewalk and driveway. Issue in between the. The buildings. You you cut your. Driveway down to twenty foot. And you have a depressed curb. And then you have a four foot sidewalk, correct?
Yes, the the curb is actually a flush curb, not not depressed. So there's no lip. It's a flush curb across. The. All the areas where the driveways are.
Okay, and what's the dimension from the. From the sidewalk to the the garage area?
So all of the driveways from the back of the sidewalk to the face of the garage are twenty feet deep.
Okay, so there's plenty of room for a car.
Correct.
Okay. I assume that the the concrete sidewalks and curb will be installed?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So that will delineate. At least delineate the sidewalk. Are they going to be the same elevation as the roadways in that area?
The the curb lines will be flush with the the pavement. And then they will begin to slope from the curb line up to the garage slope at no more than two percent to maintain the EDA accessibility access.
Is that a little bit steep for walking?
Two percent is the quarter inch per foot or two point oh eight percent is the maximum slope for a ADA accessible ramp.
That that it's not the question I ask. This is not a little bit steep for walking. I mean, you're.
No, the two percent is the is the is the maximum allowed. By our by cross slope, most sidewalks are cross slope from back to front or two percent. So in terms of in terms of longitude, technically, you can always go, you can up to five percent. Slope.
It's not a trick question. I'm just asking. You're inviting people to walk on a sloping sidewalk. Isn't that? Isn't that two percent a little bit steep for walking?
Is not, no. Regulations.
The the sidewalk coming in from Hex Street to that first alley that goes north and south. What's the width on that?
The sidewalk up on the top up on by building one here?
No, on the opposite, there you go.
That's five feet as we're coming in.
Okay, and it's going to transition down to four?
Transition, as you get to the intersection, there's a a depressed curb there, a ramp that comes down. Because this is all six inch full height curb.
Right.
Crosses areas you come in. So we're transitioning down to the flush curb.
Okay.
Into the driveway. So we're ramping down and then from from this point down, all the rest of the sidewalk is four foot wide.
Okay. Fair enough. Jumping over to the storm drainage. You're aware that Wesley Lake. Periodically. Floods. Lake Avenue and. Outflow pipes into Wesley Lake. Are pretty consistently. Flooding. When you did your calculation stuff, did you take a look at that and see if there's a way to? To solve some of that problem?
So what we looked at was, as I mentioned, was the impact of the runoff of our site from a hundred year storm. And how that impacted or what that was in relation to the. Conveyance, the design of the pipes and the conveyance capacity through the initial design. So if we were bringing our water to the the existing system. Would the system be able to handle our flow within that pipe system? As we are proposing it. Based on my look, as I testified, there's a there's a slight increase in the in the the flow coming off our site. As compared to the twenty five year design flow. In the system along Hex Street, but it's not a significant increase. From 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 the numbers I looked at. We have a little bit more flow, more flow coming off onto Asbury Avenue. But the pipe that runs down the center of Asbury Avenue had a. Additional capacity of up to ten CFS within the roadway. On the conveyance pipe downstream. So our flow coming into it for the hundred year storm. While it was exceeding the twenty five year design that was coming to this inlet and coming into the into the pipes. It was still let it it was less than the hundred, the ten CFS capacity that that's. That the system says it's in the in the in that pipe. So we feel that the the there is capacity in the pipe off of Asbury Avenue that travels down and then into Wesley Lake on the eastern end.
But you are aware that even with the before your. You add your development calculations that Wesley Lake still has that flooding problem. Lake Avenue has a flooding problem. Is this going to make it worse?
Compared compared to current conditions where there's no development on the site. There will be more runoff coming coming to to Wesley Lake. However, the the system. As I, from my review, the way it was designed, you know, was designed to handle a ninety percent impervious. Off the site and convey a twenty five year storm downstream to Wesley Lake. If conditions of what, if conditions have changed, the pipes that are conveying the flow down to the thing have. You know, maybe they haven't been maintained properly over the years or haven't been cleaned out. The inlets may be cleaned out, but sometimes the pipes don't get cleaned out, which affects the capacity, could affect the capacity. This is a similar issue we had at the the beach club that we talked about. That if the if the pipes are not being maintained, a lot of times, you know, people don't see, don't see the pipes, they don't see the potential that's inside of it. That could drastically reduce the the capacity of the system for both conveyance and should the lake, you know. Rise in elevation at times, but water backs up into those pipes eliminates some some additional storage capacity that that's there. So ba- based on the numbers I I looked at. Yes, we are increasing flow down into Wesley Lake. But the the capacity of the system, from what I from what I see, what I'm available to my numbers, regardless of the real world conditions that are occurring. The. The system. Appears to have capacity, has has some available capacity to convey our flow down down to Wesley Lake. Now, that doesn't say that that other developments throughout the site or upstream this area. And all that gets into it, something else might occur to it at this time, based on this development and what's around here. It appears that that there there should be capacity that 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 runs down to that that lake. And there might be other things going on in the lake and from other areas in town, like I said, that that drain down to the lake that causes other conditions. And these backups to occur, the 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 pipe coming down Hex Street, there's no inlets along Hex Street. Once you get past the intersection to Cookman, it's a straight run right into. One manhole and a straight run into across Lake Street into the into the lake. So anything that would be conveyed into there wouldn't wouldn't come out until it got up to Cookman Avenue and the elevations at Cookman are up at. The elevations up here. Elevation of the site here is up at eleven and twelve. You know, nine or ten out on the road out here. So substantially, obviously, we're higher here than we are down along Lake Avenue or Lake Street.
You indicated in your testimony that you weren't putting an appreciable amount of additional runoff into. Into Asbury Avenue and and or heck. Give us an approximate increase.
I don't I don't have that number handy, unfortunately. I I looked through the report, it wasn't in, wasn't in the report. We didn't look at it. I thought I had it in there. I did look at the flow, like I said, the the, as I testified or mentioned, I do recall that the pipe along Asbury Avenue had. From the from the caps that I that I looked at had a ten CFS.
I'm sorry.
At ten, ten CFS of available capacity.
Okay.
In that pipe heading on heading east into it. Now, while we're not, we're not adding ten CFS additional off that site, you know. I could possibly say we're probably could be possibly putting up up to five CFS, I think, into that into that area. So still having extra capacity in that pipe. And then the flow off of Hex Street, I don't know what that is, but it's probably potentially an increase of a CFS. From what the design of the twenty five year storm was for that pipe. Taking account that the design was also done with a different precipitation value and some other factors that have that have been changed over the last fifteen years. And how we how we analyze these systems. So. So it's just, you know, talking about. The runoff there, so there's a slight increase in through here, you know, I I can get those, I can get that information to you, provide it to you. I don't like, I don't have it off, I don't have it available right now.
Okay, and how about the quality of the work coming off the your site? How is that?
All of the the drainage systems in the road. Prior to discharging into Wesley Lake, there are water quality treatment devices that have been installed prior to the outfalls. So all the water is treated through a device before it gets to Wesley Lake. So it comes off our site, goes into the existing system. And then is conveyed through those devices before discharging to the lake.
Okay.
This is Eric Galipo. Hi, Mr. Delaney again. So just so I understand, you've given us these numbers that tell us the existing versus the proposed. And what you've told us is that certain, you know, certain of these outflows are going to have. A modest increase in the amount of stormwater and some of them are just going to be as as would be expected. Is that correct?
The the one on Cookman Avenue is actually has a reduction off our site. For the hundred years, the hundred years flow coming off the site is less than the twenty five that was designed for the pipe system.
Right.
There are increases for Asbury and and Heck as you as as I mentioned.
So have you taken any measures on the site through any active measures on the site? To reduce the amount of stormwater leaving the site through water recharge, rain gardens. Rainwater harvesting aquifer, I'm sorry, not aquifer, cisterns, anything like that. Are are you contemplating anything like that for this site?
As part of the the initial submission, did not contemplate that. We believe that the the. Increases that we were putting into the system. How they were, the existing system was able to handle that would not result in any downstream. That would happen any any flooding downstream of the discharge point.
However, you so, yeah, it 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 doesn't result in any, like, you're you're meeting the requirements. But you're not doing anything onsite to reduce what actually leaves to.
That's correct.
Right, correct. So how, so you did you, you did not explore any options for onsite water management?
We did, we did not, like I said, I don't believe, I didn't believe or presented the analysis, we didn't believe it was necessary. Understanding the positions that Mr. Henry's pointed up and and the Wesley Lake Commission has raised about the lake itself. Some of that, I believe, is a bigger global product issue than just the the site itself here. But no, we did not.
Look at. Correct. It is, it is a global issue, but everybody contributes to that. Right? So it's like your one site is a portion of the larger.
Understood, understood.
So do you think that there are opportunities on this site where there could be active measures taken? To reduce the overall stormwater that leaves the site. Irrespective of whether or not the attendant system it's being delivered to has sufficient capacity to deal with it.
So you're you're, Mr. Victor, your engineer, did point out in his review, like I said, that water quantity reductions may be appropriate. You know, as I said, we're also waiting to hear back from the DEP who may also feel that. Water quantity reductions may be appropriate for the site. So is there is there space and opportunities to potentially add some onsite? Systems that could reduce the flow. I believe there could be. Might be able to do something on the property. Want to hear what Cat, what the DEP has to say to see if there's anything. More than than, I guess, what what their comments would be to see what they're requesting and then we can work with. Them as well as the Mr. Victor to come up with something that if if it's desired to, you know, try and. Try and work something out to to alleviate some concerns downstream.
So can you just for the board, review what the overall lot coverage on the site is of of your proposed site? Yeah, this might be a follow up question is just for our, you know, for the purposes of this. It would be good to know the the building coverage and the total impervious coverage.
Okay, I'll have to calculate that for you.
Yeah, yeah, of course. I realize it might not be readily available. And. It I I would personally like to see it divided between those two numbers as what is being covered with buildings. And what's being covered with other impervious surfaces. Are you good, Eric?
I can calculate this for you.
All right, this is a, this is Mike Manziel. I'll jump in now. I, you know, I have a couple of concerns, but I'll limit it to two major ones that I find. I don't know that you really provide a testimony about it, but and maybe you're not the right professional to do so, but. In terms of rationale for the for the fencing in of the walkway on the east side of the property. Is that something that the planner might provide more testimony to or someone else? Or is that something you could talk about?
I I guess, I guess, ask your question and I can. I guess, what was your question? The the. I I guess, I guess ask your question and I can, I guess, what was your question, the the return that comes into on the streets?
Fencing in the 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 walkway at all?
So that was, I did testify to it, and this is, as I, as I testified, it was discussed by the applicant. You know, taking the, taking in the the comment from the TRC during that process. And it was, it was determined, it was determined that it wanted to keep some kind of a control and privacy and security for the residents who are fronting on that that walkway directly. So that was the reason why we, it was supposed to be gated at that location for access for the residents only along this strip. Along the strip through the site between the two things now. As I mentioned, also, there is that other exit driveway, extra walkway that comes out to Cookman. You know, along the the alleyway that doesn't restrict access into the site. So people still can, they can walk through here and come up and come out to Hex Street and come around.
Right.
They just can't, can't come through this piece right here.
Yeah, and so that that rationale is what I find problematic because, you know, the applicant is basically saying that there's no problem with the public coming into the site. But we definitely don't want to allow a convenient way to use the property as kind of a cut through to for the block, which I might know is probably on the long side, the longest block in Asbury Park right now, it's a super block. And a a pedestrian cut through would be an excellent opportunity to shorten the block, at least from a pedestrian perspective. And I just, I I guess I'm struggling with the rationale, particularly that this walkway was designed very much to be a public walkway in that there's benches. It's almost inviting, were it not for the fence and gate that that cut the pedestrians out. So I just, I I guess I'm struggling with the rationale to do that.
I believe the space, the space was designed for use by the residents internally, is that they wanted to walk in through there, sit down outside, outside their confines of their, your patio area or so.
Which is also gated. Which is also gated.
Oh, yeah, on the two ends, but you do have access through sidewalks, you know, coming in off of Hex Street and off of Cookman. So you can access, get into it to come down, do so. So the internal residents that are here, they can walk, they can maneuver, walk over here and sit and gather and, you know, do things. And it's, it's, you know, it it really, like I said, it was a security issue. Primarily, you know, keep people from just constantly traversing through the development on a non-public right of way area. You know, you do have streets, yes, it is a long block. You know, but you know, the the walking from south, sorry, walking in the north-south direction through here, people coming down Bird, where are they going? Are they coming to the 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 Wesley Lake Apartments? Or are they going up Cookman Avenue to the, to the more commercialized retail area, or are they heading down to the the area further east? There's no, there's nearly no destination on this side, and same thing going north, you're going to go to the east towards the Kingsley Ave and Ocean Ave, or you're heading west on Cookman to get to the, you know, retail or the entertainment portions of the develop, of the of the city.
I I think that the destination and origin is irrelevant. You know, and and I don't want to get into, I think I belabor the point already, but I think, you know, this is kind of more of a subdivision issue and, you know, maybe there is an opportunity to actually create public right of way. Instead of, you know, faking it, if you will, in this case, but I think I made my point. So the only other point I wanted to make was about the AC units, and I I don't know of any other development similar to this, whether it be South Grand, the Vibe, or anybody else that has the AC units in the front yard. And this, this, even if you want to say that, you know, aesthetically, you want to ignore that piece of it. From a practicality standpoint, I don't know if you had to replace an AC unit for building three. I I don't know how you actually get to it. You know, if you, if you have AC units on the roof, you know, you can get to it with a crane from the street. You would be able to access the AC units along the alleys, but for those, you know, eight units that front on the the muse, quote unquote, I I don't know how you would even get to those AC units to service or replace them.
Well, in that case, I mean, the, we, you know, there's a comment about putting on the roof, and we felt the maintenance of that and the ability to access it would have been problematic. So that's why we didn't, we we scratched off the roof option for that. In terms of the the location on the driveway side, on the other side, you know, it it comes down to the way the building and units are configured as a front and back unit, you know, in in these types of facilities. Yes, if this was a traditional townhomes that that went from front to back with no interruption. Then yes, you can put it in the front, you wouldn't have an issue, but you have units in the front and back of it. You know, on either side of the building and trying to keep them separate and do the wiring and and the fl- piping associated with it. You know, to to keep it within, you know, that that residence and that tenant's space and not, you know, try to avoid conflicting underneath it. The access to it for maintenance, I mean, it's similar to any other other, you know, roof area or areas along the streets. If somebody was parked in there, they'd either have to park along Cookman and the rest, the the owner would have to allow them access through the gate to come in and out to to service it, you know, during the the time period. Or they'd have to park in the the driveway and walk around the back. You know, well, it's not convenient to walk around the back, but you could walk, you could sit on Cookman Avenue and walk up and.
Yeah, I mean, servicing is one issue, replacement is a whole nother, you know. It it's tough enough to 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 do a crane to replace units, I get that, but I I just think it might be almost impossible to access those eight units along the muse. But, you know, again, I think I made my point.
You you know, it's interesting to me, this is Eric Galapo, you know, it's interesting to me, Mike, is that both of the issues that you brought up, whether or not that it's, you know, head on are resultant, again, of the orientation and the subdivision of this property. If that building weren't tucked back there, there would be no need to have an alleyway tech for those people to access what has been called a front and a back door, depending on, you know, the context. And also, the the AC unit and the servicing and the maintenance of that front yard area, or is it a backyard? I don't know, is it a side yard? I don't know, it seems to be any of those things. They're all, they're all create, those conditions are all created, again, by this site plan and the specificity of this building design. And, you know, I I think we keep coming back to it, it sounds like we're belaboring it, but every time we want to talk about an issue, be it, you know, that, the public access way, the orientation of the buildings, Cookman Avenue, it still comes down to that single issue of what is driving the subdivision and the subdivision and what's driving the subdivision is the building design. That's it for me.
So I just, I have a request for next time, this is Alexis Taylor. While you're providing the view from Cookman, I think you also should provide a view looking west of what that fence condition is, because a lot of people are going to be looking at that, the fence within a fence. I also, and I know we belabored it, but I don't feel that you provided a compelling argument for enclosing that area. You know, having a front porch is actually one of the great aspects of a lot of Asbury Park typologies too. I I don't think you're creating a situation where those people are basically on two alleyways. And I I don't, you can make the argument again for security, I would like a more compelling argument for why that has to be enclosed. I don't even think it has to be a meandering path, it could be a
Yes.
Straight path through.
Actually, I think a straight path, right, a straight path would actually make more visual sense.
Exactly, I, yeah, the meandering doesn't, it looks fine on plan, but I don't, I don't know that it really serves any purpose.
No, you want to be able to have a clear view across that for the most security.
So if you could provide that view looking west of that six foot fence, which again, no front yard has a six foot fence in Asbury Park, so.
But hedges.
This is Jen Souter, planning board as well, I'm just going to say the same, I had handwritten notes about a half hour ago, and they were almost point for point the same about that that back area with the meandering pathway and that it feels like you're trying to do both things at once, and it's creating the situation that I think could be really, end up being pretty negative for the residents and for the public. And the other part is just to go back for one second about the interaction with the public space. First of all, I'm really, really happy to see that the public space there, I'm so glad that it's happening. But just that there, without even changing the whole site design, there may be ways to, for that side of the building or that Cookman facing edge of your property to make some small change, some changes that would make the relationship between that space feel more like they belong together instead of having that feeling of, here's this closed, you know, internal focused neighborhood backing up onto what could be a really great public space. So I think there's a few things maybe that we could sort of tweak without. You know, and and still have it be a positive space there for for both the residents and the public.
Jim Henry again, I just have one comment I'd like to add, Mr. Delaney. One of the last slides that you showed, you indicated a sales office on the Asbury Avenue, as I recall. If my memory serves me correctly, prior to the construction of Vibe, across Asbury Avenue and across Cookman, a sales office was constructed. And it was supposed to take care of the sales of all the units, all the development in that area. And you, that building still exists, it was supposed to be temporary. And it was supposed to be a sales office is going to handle all of this, if my memory serves me correctly. So you're you're changing the ground rules again, a bit. Asking for another sales office.
I have to talk to the applicant about that, this is what they've directed me, said that they're doing, so I don't know the back history of some of that information, but.
Well, maybe it's something that should be looked into prior to re-energizing this request.
We can provide further information on that question, but
I'm sorry.
This is Jennifer Porter, we can provide further information on that question, but it's my understanding that that office was not intended to serve all future projects or or limited.
As I recall, it was the whole, you know, vibe and everything else in this, on this particular site, and anyway, it's, it's my my recollection, you can check it out.
We will, we will verify that.
Rick? Rick Lambert? Irina?
Yes, Jack?
Is Rick still on board?
I'm sorry, I was, I was, I was on mute, sorry.
Okay.
So are there any other questions from the planning board members? The board professionals?
Rick, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, can we go through each of the remaining board members, just to make sure that everyone has a chance and there are no problems with their microphones?
Okay, you want to call up the names of?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Clayton, do you have any questions?
Okay, anything I would have to say would be redundant, what's already been said. Although I still want to have the idea of the air conditioners in the front addressed. I think there has to be a solution. It doesn't feel that they belong there, or they made the sound from those air conditions to be disruptive to the public. There's just my feeling that there there has to be a better solution, but that's it for me.
Thank you, and Mayor John Ward, just want to make sure that you have a chance. John, are you there? Oh, there he goes, one second. I I can see that his audio is connecting, so just bear with us for one moment.
Maybe we just want to look back to him, Irina?
Okay, all right, um, did I miss anyone else that hasn't gone ahead? I don't think so. Okay, Rick, did you want to go to the board professionals?
Sure, are there any questions from the board professionals? Is John still trying to get on?
Yeah, it says that it's still trying to connect.
Send it, can you, oh, that's just his audio?
Yeah.
Can you send him a chat to see if there's, if he has any questions?
Sorry, I'm just going to send him a text.
Well, should we just go ahead and let let the public start asking questions, and when John gets on, we can have him.
Sure.
I think that one of our board professionals, did Donna have something to say?
Yes, please.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Donna, I'm sorry.
Hi, Donna Miller, board professional, Sean, I just want to touch on the lighting. So we have remarked that there may be not enough detail on your lighting plan. The schedule calls out two different types of fixtures, one is the Ballard light, one is the hall mounted light. But there's that third fixture, which is by the unit doors, is that correct?
There there are two others, one by the unit doors and one by the garage. The garage, over the garage and over the patio doors, and there's a fourth fixture by the internal.
Okay, so so it's four fixtures. But the lighting plant schedule only depicts symbology for two. So our question is, you know, if you're only showing the symbology for those two types of fixtures, does this photometric actually represent all of the proposed lighting?
It does, it did not represent the the building mounted lights, we can revise that and 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 provide that.
Absolutely, thank you. And then and I, yeah, okay, no, that's good, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Jason, board engineer, I just wanted to circle back on a couple of things. In terms of the lighting, just piggybacking on what Donna was talking about. Not to repeat what she said, but one more thing. We think that there should be a little bit more light, particularly along the roadways or driveways, whatever you want to call them, the two roadways and walkway. Sean made a point that they don't want to light it up too much, being residential development, and that's fine. But I think there's a compromise there. So just to kind of circle back on that one. In terms of stormwater management. In terms of stormwater management, the water quality, the one thing that we just have to have the applicant prove for sure is that the water that leaves the site will pass through one of the existing water quality units before it discharges into the lake. The CAFRA approval talks about future developments not being required to provide additional water quality because of water quality units that are being part of the overall waterfront redevelopment area infrastructure. And that's fine, as long as the water that exits this site goes through one of those units. In terms of water quantity, Sean and I had a discussion earlier today, and I understand his position. But, you know, my, my position is a little bit different. I think, you know, the CAFRA approval goes back a long time to Mayor Moore's comment earlier about, you know, it being about 18 years old. You know, the lake itself is not tidally influenced. The area is tidally influenced. The area of development is not, you know, we're outside of a flood hazard area, but the flood hazard area is right there. So, okay, it's a flood hazard area. You can look at the DEP regs and it talks about development and flood hazard, tidal flood hazard areas and proving that you're not adversely impacting the downstream, which was the bulk of Sean's testimony. But I think the city in that area have experienced issues. So even without this development, there's an issue. And then, once this development goes in, we heard testimony of additional flows. So it can only exacerbate the situation. So I think that this development here will have to provide water quantity reductions. What we talked about today on the phone, kind of how we concluded on things, was let's see what the DEP's review comes back with so that we could try to prevent two different reviews and sets of comments, and we can try and dovetail them together in the best interest of CAFRA and the city and of course, the applicant as well. So that's how we left that. I just wanted to close that loop for you guys.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Irina, has John made it on yet?
Yes, I have him back on.
Okay. John, do you have any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, so we have about 25 minutes left that we can entertain questions from the public and then we will adjourn the meeting at 10:00. So we'll go ahead and open up the questions from the public.
Thank you, Rick. This is Irina. I just want to make sure that Mr. McQueen has an opportunity to go first on behalf of Wesley Lake Commission. Mr. McQueen?
Thanks, Irina. This is Doug McQueen again for Wesley Court. And yes, I'm speaking as a member of the Wesley Lake Commission. So a lot of my questions are going to obviously relate to stormwater and really reiterate some of the points that Mr. Fichter just made about regardless of the calculations made, the, the, um, the actual practical application of what happens with the lake. So let me get started. So.
Excuse me, Mr. McQueen, Jack Serpico.
Yes, sir.
Any interruption? Are you going to ask him questions or are you going to make comments?
No, 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 just ask questions.
That's fine. Sorry for the interruption.
I just wanted to preface them to make sure that we all knew what the kind of nature of what I was going to ask, so I didn't jump around. Mr. Delaney, I just want to know if you've ever visited this site during a rainstorm to see if the calculations that you have for existing runoff appropriately reflect what actually happens in a rainstorm on this site?
I have been in the waterfront redevelopment area during rain events. I have not seen, I guess, the flooding that's been commented on by the board members. I have not seen that aspect along Lake Avenue in any of my visits.
Okay, that was actually my next question was have you seen or are familiar with how the lake floods along Lake Avenue? And I don't mean that it floods. I, I mean functionally what it is that causes the lake to flood. Are you familiar with, with how the lake floods when it does flood Lake Avenue?
I haven't seen it in person, so I don't know how the actual conditions would occur. No.
Okay, but in that first, thank you, because that was my next question. But my first question was about the application site itself. Have you seen or witnessed how that site actually drains during a rainstorm? Or just run the calculations?
Like I said, I've visited, I've visited the site and the entire waterfront redevelopment area during rain events on separate occasions. I did not see anything off of this site in those, in those times that I was in the area that showed me anything that was abnormal.
But you wouldn't know if there's a difference, even if it's just qualitatively, not quantitatively, between what your calculations are and the way the site actually drains this large grass parcel?
Correct.
Okay. In your, in preparing the stormwater report, did you consult or communicate with any of the authorities in Asbury Park who are responsible for maintaining the stormwater management plan in Asbury Park?
I did not. I looked at the, the information that was the part of the original design for the entire waterfront, as well as the infrastructure component report for any improvements that were done to the stormwater system by the master redeveloper. I took a look at that information to see how the calculations were done and what the impacts were that they anticipated back in 2004 and some current upgrades that occurred. And then took a look at this and that, this development and how it would compare with those calculations.
So, but like you just said, you only consulted the infrastructure report and didn't contact or communicate either the superintendent of DPW or anyone else responsible for preparing and maintaining the stormwater management plan for the city?
I did not.
Okay. Are you familiar with the outflow mechanism for Wesley Lake and the way that it drains water or sometimes fails to drain water into the Atlantic Ocean, causing the lake to rise?
From, you know, recent discussions with Mr. Fichter, he advised me on the, the way that out, that outflow was supposed to function.
But you didn't do any investigation or an analysis yourself?
No.
Mr. Serpico, if I could just interject at this point, a number of these questions relate specifically to conditions relating specifically to Wesley Lake as opposed to conditions relating from specifically this project and this site. And so, you know, to the extent that there are numerous contributing factors relating to the conditions at Wesley Lake, which was previously testified to by not only Mr. Delaney, but which was addressed by the board's engineer, it is difficult for our site engineer to address questions relating to conditions which could come from numerous sources and which are outside the scope of the review of this application.
Yeah, but I think it's fair to question the witness, to find out the analysis that the witness undertook when doing his work for the project. It's informative to know whether or not these, these things were looked at. And if they weren't relevant, you could, his answer could be, no, I didn't look at them because we didn't deem them to be relevant. I mean, we're not going to go into the, a whole lot of detail on this, but I think it's a fair question, fair. I think they're fair questions to find out the scope of what Sean looked at when he did his work. Only for that purpose, not, not for the purpose that Sean or you or your client would be responsible to fix the outflow or something like that.
Okay, thank you. That was the point that we were getting at. Thank you.
Okay, if it helps, I could actually make my next question tie into the relevance, just like Mr. Serpico said, and that relates to stormwater quantity. Under the DEP regulations for controlling stormwater runoff quantity impacts, there are several criteria under NJAC 7:8 5.4 A3. And there are four considerations, and we've already touched on the last one, which the applicant is relying on here, that in tidal flood hazard areas, stormwater runoff quantity analysis in accordance with the previous three requirements shall only be applied if the increased volume of stormwater runoff could increase flood damages below the point of discharge. And so that's where this becomes relevant. I want to ask a couple of questions about below the point of discharge. So just so that I make sure, we make sure we're understanding you correctly, Mr. Delaney. The point of discharge for this project on this site is where it discharges into the city's infrastructure along Cookman Avenue and at the top of Heck Street?
Yeah, the southwest corner of Heck, Cookman Avenue and the inlet in Asbury Avenue. Correct.
So for the purposes of that provision, that's the point of discharge. And you mentioned some elevations before about the elevation of the site, the elevation of Lake Avenue and where some of the infrastructure was. So for the purposes of this provision, the Wesley Grove condominium, for example, would be below the point of discharge for this project, wouldn't it?
Correct.
And Lake Avenue itself, which is the city street, would be below the point of discharge for this project?
Yes.
So if Wesley Lake floods in such a way that it backs up the city's infrastructure at the bottom of Heck Street, such that the water coming off of this site and into the city's infrastructure then can't flow down the existing infrastructure, wouldn't that increase flood damages below the point of this project's discharge?
Yeah, the regulations, and my answer to your question there is for the regulations, the quantity now should be applied if the, if the increased volume of stormwater from the development could increase flood damages below the, the point of discharge. Based on my analysis and what the pipes have, I don't believe the flood damage below would be, would be increased or would be increased, you know, because of this development. It may be increased, it may be occurring because of other developments that are already existing and causing things. But I don't believe it's going to be exacerbated by.
Well, actually, so I want to ask you about just the specific pieces of infrastructure that are carrying this water down from the site. And we could start with Heck Street if you want. I don't know if you have a diagram, if you want to pull it up on your screen, that'd be great.
I don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. But, so then I'll have to do it by description. There is a, a stormwater system at the top of Heck Street that flows down Heck Street to the lake you described. And as you described it, this, your site, this proposed project site would be the only site draining into that system? Did I, did I understand your testimony correctly?
I said the, I didn't say the only site that drains into the system. I said the only, I believe, the only undeveloped site that drains to the system.
The only undeveloped site?
Yes.
And I may have misunderstood your testimony, but I thought you said that below that point where this project would direct its stormwater into the city's infrastructure and going down Heck Street, there are no other inlets?
That, yes, based on my review, it is a manhole located in Heck Street, but there's no inlets along the roadway prior to the discharge in Wesley Lake.
Not the four stormwater drains at the corner of Heck Street and Lake Avenue?
I didn't see those on the, on the files that I looked at. In my review, I didn't, I did not see any inlets. The system that I saw, based on the mappings that I had available, showed the system that comes down Heck Streets goes directly into Wesley Lake. There may be inlets that are down there at that intersection. They may not connect into that system, the discharge. They may go east and west and tie into other systems that have different outfalls.
Well, that's, yeah, and that actually is the question is whether or not those storm drains tie into this, this storm pipe coming down Heck Street.
Say that again?
So, and the reason why it's relevant, if I, if you want me to explain, is that when the lake level rises, it's those storm drains that flood the street and any water in that system above those storm drains. So upstream, meaning up Heck Street towards Cookman, is the water that gets forced out onto the street out of the storm drains. So when the lake floods, the lake doesn't come over the wall. It never comes over the wall. It comes out of the storm drains backwards because the lake level rises. So the question is, if the lake is in that condition, and I can assure you it is on a frequent basis, wouldn't water coming down a storm drain or a storm pipe down Heck Street become backed up and flood whatever, whatever outlet it can find?
If that was the case, and like I said, per my review of the available files and, and information I had from, from a site visit, the, the pipe that, the inlet that's located at the corner of Cookman and Heck is the last inlet in this pipe run that discharges to Wesley Lake. So if that pipe should back up, the first inlet it would come out of would be at the corner of Cookman and Heck. It did not show connections to any other inlets along Lakes, Lake Avenue, Lake Street, Lake Avenue.
So it would come out?
I'm not denying, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you that if it does, yes, as water rises in the lake, it seeks its own level. So if those inlets are lower and they have different outfalls and water backs into them, yes, potentially water would come out of those inlets. But I'm saying the pipe run on Heck, there were no other inlets beyond the Cookman Ave intersection that I saw to the outfall.
So let's use that scenario that you described, then, if there was no other inlet to back up, but the bottom of that outflow pipe was filled with water because the lake level rose, where would, where would that water go? Wouldn't it come out the, the drain that you just described at the corner of Cookman and Heck?
Depends on, depends on the level of the, of the, the level of the lake.
And if, and if it did, if there was enough flow in a short enough amount of time, wouldn't that water then, instead of going into the storm drain, flood whatever was nearby?
I don't know what, I don't, I don't know what the, the max elevation of the lake would be to, to current. I don't have elevations downstream along Lake Avenue, where the wall is or what the other inlets are in that location. I do, you know, based on the information I have, that the water, if those areas of lake are lower, any flooding occurs in the lake would occur at, you know, any, any rise in the lake's elevation that would back water up through those pipes would affect lower, low lying areas first. In relation to our site, I don't know, I'm assuming based on the flood elevation maps that I've seen, that our site is higher than those areas. So the flooding, anything that would back up would not come up, up to Cookman Avenue through our pipe system that was resulting from runoff from our site along Heck Street. Because the water wouldn't get to the lake. It would be sitting in the pipes.
Or coming out any available opening that was below the top of the putt, the inlet?
You're talking about, you know, the lake is significant volume of water. The amount of runoff that would be coming off this site that going through a pipe. The amount of runoff that would volume of it coming off this site that going through a pipe would be a fraction, you know, of the, of an increase in anything that would occur within that lake, within that lake.
Okay, I wanted to move on to the use of non-structural stormwater management strategies?
Okay.
The DEP requires developer, obviously, as you know, you put it in your report, that non-structural stormwater management strategies will be used in a major development to the maximum extent practicable?
Yes.
So one of those strategies listed, and I think you did list it in your report too, is number two, minimize impervious surfaces and break up or disconnect the flow of runoff over impervious surfaces. I'm trying to find, let me find the spot in your report where you address that. You simply pointed out in your, so you pointed out in your report that the CAFRA permit allows 90 and you're doing 78% impervious surface on the property?
Okay.
But that doesn't address to the, how does that address the, to the maximum extent practicable?
That's a very, very subjective criteria.
Of course.
I believe that based on the development we've done, we have not put any extraneous areas of impervious surfaces or stuff other than what the minimum that is needed per design regulations for vehicular and pedestrian access, as well as, as well as the building sizes. We haven't.
What does talk about, doesn't it talk about in the same sentence, disconnect the flow of runoff, break up or disconnect the flow of runoff over impervious surfaces? And in your description of the driving lanes, didn't you describe that the driving lane that makes up the vertical part of the T, so to speak, is, if I remember correct, 250 feet long?
It is, yes. At a 20-foot wide width, which is, you know, a typical roadways that, you know, for other types of residential developments or so would typically be 24 feet throughout. We narrowed, you know, we did narrow the pavement area down. We added the sidewalk in. So we kept, we have minimums in terms of driveways, minimums in terms of roads, minimum in terms of sidewalk widths. Everything, everything's been disconnecting. You know, in some instances, it's very practical and some instances it's not. This case, you know, we could have disconnected potentially the roof runoff from the buildings. However, you know, the comment, the comment from the board engineer as well as, you know, our feeling that the the space wasn't really available to do that effectively.
The space, sorry, I didn't hear you, the space wasn't available?
The areas where we could have discharged it to disconnect it, we're not, due to the type of building proposed, we're not would not be able to put and locate where they would provide, would provide really any benefit or any substantial difference than if we connected them.
So if we're understanding that correctly, with a different layout, there could be space available, but this proposal doesn't propose space available to do that?
I don't know if that's the case or not, a different layout.
Okay. And was there any consideration to the maximum extent practical of using permeable pavers on walkways or driveways?
That was, that was not discussed with the applicant.
Moving on to number eight on that list about providing vegetated open channel conveyance systems, usually called either rain gardens, swells, bio swells. Why weren't any of those incorporated in your report? It simply says, no vegetated open channel conveyance systems are proposed. It doesn't explain why they weren't proposed to the maximum extent practicable or why they were impracticable.
The locations for these open channel conveyance systems would be located, you know, in the, I guess this is defined as the muse area that people have referred to as tonight. Due to the sidewalk that we're proposing in there, the, and the existing grades on the site, it didn't seem practical, once again, to provide an open channel conveyance system due to the existing elevations of going up and down, up and down. The relief from one end to the other was not significant enough to, to be able to design something of that nature effective, effectively. That's a function of the site, the site, the size of the site. Not necessarily, not necessarily all related to the layout of the site.
I'm sorry, you said the size of the site, not necessarily the layout?
The overall dimensions of the property as relation to not just, not, not the, not specifically the layout that was, that is provided, that's been proposed.
What's, I forgot from before, I mean, I guess I could estimate it if you, but what is the length of that muse area, I guess we're calling it, the length of that walkway plus the width?
The width, I don't, see if I have. I know, one end, it's 21 feet on the north end to the building face.
And the length?
22 feet at the driveway, so about 20, a little over 20 feet in the length. Let's do this. One second. Length of that is over 300, 300 feet along that property line.
The 300 feet by 20 feet and to the maximum extent practicable and open vegetated channel or conveyance, like a rain garden bio swell or some other swell is not practicable. Is that correct?
That's correct, because this swell would have to be at a minimum slope, typically one and a half to 2% over 300 feet. That's a six-foot elevation change or three feet if you spot in the middle. And the grades on site are very, are very flat. And so it's not practical to design a three-foot deep swell. That would be three foot change in elevation from one end of the property to the other.
I forgot, didn't Mr. Henry ask about a 2% grade on, on part of that property or was that something different?
That, he was talking about the sidewalks themselves and what I testified to is that the sidewalks, you know, along the the driveways are from the action point from the curb line up to the driveway was all designed at a 2% up to the building face. So you're starting by adding more 2% slopes in the back of this raises the, it raises the site, it raises other aspects of it. You know, that just, or, you know, or to keep it as with the grades that are tying into existing grades on the remainder allowed on 102, the depth is just not there to get, to be able then convey that water into a, an inlet structure at some point to get it into the system within the street.
And I guess I have the same questions for the water quality component, component for non-structural stormwater management strategies. The regulation says to the maximum extent practicable, but under B on your report, it says, I'm sorry, I had it right here. No additional water quality measures are required, is that correct? So that's to the maximum extent practicable?
Yeah, the, the water quality has been provided within the existing right of ways of the, of the roadways prior to discharging to the outfalls at Wesley Lake.
The...
And I remember the, this is.
Doesn't the regulation say that the person submitting the application shall identify?
No, they are, they're located within the existing infrastructure that's present within the waterfront redevelopment area.
If I read the, does the regulation say if the applicant contends that it is not feasible for engineering, environmental or safety reasons to incorporate any non-structural stormwater strategies? The action, the, by the strategy and provide a basis for the contention. But in your report, it just says that they're not being proposed or provided.
They are, they are provided. They're, they're all existing. We're not proposing, it's not proposed on a site, on this site because the, the the mechanism for treating water quality has already been installed along the existing stormwater conveyance system to the outfall.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the just the discussion about, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I could just interject again, I mean, first, it is 10 o'clock and so I don't know if the board had a hard stop at 10 o'clock. But again, with respect to this line of questioning, what was, what was testified to by the applicant's expert, Mr. Delaney, as well as what was confirmed by Mr. Victor, is that to the extent that DEP, who is charged with enforcing these regulations that we're going through piecemeal, determines that any additional stormwater controls are required for this site in order to address stormwater conditions, that will come out in the course of the DEP review. And the applicant has already testified that they are willing to agree to what DEP requires in connection with this site. So it, to go through each and every possible measure and what could potentially be done is jumping the gun in terms of what will ultimately control in the overall context of DEP's regulatory control over this site, the CAFRA permit, the CAFRA permit requirements and the stormwater regulations. So again, I wanted to make that point, that I understand the relevance of some of these questions, but some of them go outside the scope of this applicant. They're master developer issues. They relate to the infrastructure plan for the entirety of this portion of the waterfront redevelopment area. And they can and should not be the responsibility of this applicant. And until further details are obtained from DEP, these answers cannot be addressed. So it's unfair to the applicant to determine at this point what, if anything, can be done in each and every fashion for each one of these measures.
This is Doug McQueen again. That makes a lot of sense. So thanks for bringing that up. Could I ask about the nature of that inquiry to DEP? What type of inquiry that is that's being made? Is that just a private inquiry within the CAFRA application? Or is it a public application that's being made? And do you have any references to it, either a case number or contact?
So as part of any application in the waterfront redevelopment area as part of the CAFRA permit, this site included a copy of the plans and reports have to be sent to CAFRA. Basically, and they have to confirm that the development as designed is in compliance with the CAFRA permit that was approved back in 2004. We made that submission to CAFRA, to the DEP for that compliance review back at the end of February, beginning of March. And we are awaiting their comments on their review of the items that were submitted. So the items you are looking at today, the site plans that were submitted with this revision date of 2/28 and the stormwater report, are the same documents that were submitted to the DEP for their review.
Okay, and DEP could review them and require additional measures?
They could.
Okay.
Or they could approve as is too.
Hi, this is Rick Lambert. So we are past the 10 o'clock hour. Leave it to the board. Are you ready to adjourn this meeting or to carry it to a future meeting? I'm sure there are a lot more questions for Mr. Delaney. What is the board's opinion?
Just to let you all know, we have three raised hands. So I don't know if you want to get through the remainder of the public questions so that Mr. Delaney perhaps doesn't have to return or if you want to.
I have a question, Jack. Sean, when do you think you'll be receiving this information or the response back from DEP that says good, bad or indifferent and makes recommendations or doesn't?
Unfortunately, I don't have an answer. We have reached out to them to find the status of their review. They did not provide us a timeline. We're continually following up with them, asking that, asking that question because we want that answer sooner rather than later as well.
Am I correct in thinking that that's something that's going to have to be submitted to the board?
The board, yes, I agree. I believe at the heart of the CAFRA compliance, we would have to address any concerns anyway and make them aware to the board because as Mr. Victor pointed out, based on our conversation, he would, you know, depending on what kinds of comments they have, we have to address whatever comments he has as well.
Okay.
Okay, so what is the board's wish? Should we continue or do you like to carry to a future meeting?
This is Jen Sauter. If there's three additional, I think I would like to be able to get through the public questions for this witness. But I'm fine with if everybody else wants to end, but I'm.
You know how long it's going to take?
I do not know. There were enough questions raised during this that I don't know that we can satisfy them all in a short timeframe.
Yeah. And I think part of it is, how much more does Mr. McQueen have? Is he complete or does he have another 10, 15 minutes? And if that's the case, I would think let's finish with Doug McQueen and carry over to the other.
I have a couple more questions. This is Doug McQueen. I have a couple more questions just relating to the right of way. I think my questions were answered about the stormwater.
Okay, then this is Rick. I think we should just forge ahead. Go ahead, Doug. Ask your additional questions.
Okay, this is still Doug McQueen. And this is a question about the right of way. Jim Henry alluded to this question before, so I just wanted to clarify. In preparing this application, did the applicant look at any of the provisions, either current or previous provisions of the waterfront redevelopment plan that did provide for public rights of way through the largest lots in the waterfront redevelopment site? When, and I, the, to clarify, when it was the east end of Sewell was vacated, I think that used to go through Wesley Grove. There was a discussion that the Wesley Grove lot, which is a very, very large lot, to Mike Manzella's point, that that would include a public right of way. And when the Wesley Grove development was proposed in 2005, ultimately built in 2007, that recommendation had unfortunately been ignored. And here we're faced yet again with another large lot. So will we try to stick with the intent of the redevelopment plan to put public rights of way through the largest lots? Or are we proposing to, again, ignore that provision?
I would say, I would believe Mr. Hughes, our planner, can speak more about the better to that in relation to the waterfront redevelopment plan and what the the goals or the design features of it relate to. So I would defer to him on that, that comment. And he will be testifying to more people after me. So obviously, hopefully at the next meeting, he should be able to get through all this, get to him.
Okay, then, in that case, then I don't have any more questions about the right of way, if it's more appropriate for him. Rick, I am, my questions are finished. Thanks for all the time tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, thank you. And Barbara Crisack, go ahead and speak.
Okay, this is Barbara Crisack, Fiona, I'm Lake Avenue. There was, I won't, I won't harp on all the issues that have already been brought up. I have just some others that I just had that, that I heard, that I haven't heard anything about. And that is, you'd mentioned about Cookman Ave streetscape would not be done as part of this project, but will be done later. Can you tell us, can you tell us what the reasoning for not doing any streetscaping on this brand new development, gorgeous development, is not being done on Cookman at all? Can you, can you just, what the thought process is for that?
The idea, the idea was to do the entire streetscape all at one time from, from all the way down to the intersection of Asbury, Cookman, all the way up to the Heck and Cookman. And this is a, this is not, the majority of the streetscape is still along the remainder. along the remainder portion of the future development lot. So it was determined that that would be a better time and do it all at once instead of doing it piecemeal across the frontage.
And what about, what about the streetscape Asbury Avenue?
Streetscape along Asbury and Heck, I believe, are already fully completed.
Oh, no, Asbury Avenue, because Heck is, Heck is part of this development.
Yeah, Asbury Avenue was completed previously already.
So, so we're creating this brand-new, beautiful structure, and we're leaving Cookman, once again, which is the most visible corner, without streetscape improvements. That's just, I'm sorry, that's a statement as opposed to a question. The other thing that, I just wanted to make sure that, I don't know if this is to you or to someone else. You'd spoken about the dead ends where there's headlight glare. I just want, I don't know if I speak, we speak to you about the potential burns or something that will block any headlights coming to Heck, to Cookman, which goes to a residential building across the street and going east towards whatever this new development's going to be, east, that we have that same kind of protection. So headlight glare does not hit either of these areas, that no one, no one will be impacted by that.
The landscape architect will testify next. We'll touch upon that.
All right, terrific. The other thing is, is that I wanted, you'd mentioned about the fourth floor and the lighting on the fourth floor. Most of these units face inward, so nobody will be impacted by those. But, but once again, the Cookman units will have lighting that will impact the folks that are overlooking that from Cookman, Wesley Grove specific. I just wanted to make sure that the lighting, and I'm questioning lighting is all downward, and there's no spillage. I missed what exact light was going to be there.
Yes, the lights up there are downward-facing lights. They're enough to illuminate essentially the areas by the doorways. Trying to get to the detail. It's a little box thing with the light will be recessed up into the box.
Okay, so it's all the
Kind of thing, and it will shoot straight down along the wall essentially, and then maybe a little out of the patio. Please note also that the, as Mr. Minervini testified to, those doorways are, there's an outdoor, you know, area on those, on those upper floor, on that upper floor for all the units. And the building with, the portion of the building with the light is mounted, is set back from the perimeter, the perimeter of the building. So it won't even extend over the edge of the building and come down towards the sidewalk areas or pedestrian areas. You know, for people walking by.
Yeah, I'm more concerned, as opposed to the people walking by, I'm more concerned about the people across the street.
Yeah, the lights will be shielded. They'll be directing it downward, downwards, and so they will not impact the views across the street.
Okay, so the Monroe or Wesley Grove will not be impacted by these lights?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, that's, I'm holding you to that. Okay, the other thing that I had was, am I right in saying that, that, you know, we like to harp on the muse? You know, that the access that you're having from Cookman? I just wanted to make it clear that from Cookman, you can get into the driveway, walk around and go to the muse. You could go from Heck, go through the driveway and sit at the muse if you'd like to, as a member of the public. Correct?
The public can access off of Cookman Avenue to the interior of the site, and then they can through the sidewalk network and access any sidewalk in the site.
Okay, so they could relax at the muse, as well as from Heck, relax at the muse there too.
If they access through Cookman off the main driveway, they can gain access to the muse, yes.
Okay, okay. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. The next person that I have is Barbara Litzinski. Go ahead and speak.
I just have a couple of questions. My concern is, also Doug's concern was the lake, Wesley Lake. I know our stormwater capacity system has increased over the years throughout the city. You know, we've worked on trying to make sure that the water goes into the stormwater system and into the lakes surrounding us. But, you know, although the the engineer or the architects and stuff for the developer are talking about the capacity that they, that the stormwater running off their developments are able to be handled by the system, there's no thought about what the lake can handle. And the lake has remained the same through the years.
Excuse me, it's Jack Serpico. You gotta ask questions.
Yes. The question I have is, did the, it's the engineer, have, did you know that there was a culvert originally that diverted all the box culvert, that diverted all the redevelopment stormwater into, directly into the outflow at one point? When the redevelopment agreement was first designed, and even in 2000, I guess it's three, the last the last change of 2004, there was a box culvert there that diverted all that water? It didn't go into the lake. Did you know that?
I am not aware of that, no.
So you had no knowledge that all the waterfront redevelopment stormwater diverted directly into the ocean?
The plans I showed didn't show the site split in this portion of the the waterfront redevelopment, redevelopment area being discharged to Wesley Lake. So that's, that's why based upon my analysis on not what may have been there previously.
So when the original agreement was made and the 90% coverage was approved, it was because the water went into the ocean. And now all that water goes into the lake, and the lake has not changed. So my question is, if that water went into the ocean, there would be no discussion, correct?
Well, if the ocean, it would be all tidally influenced. That's correct. So there would be nothing that the, all the pies would be affected by a tidal water body, and therefore quantity would not be required.
Right, and your report says that the lake is a tidal water body, which it is not.
Mr. Mr. Victor and I have discussed that issue. I understand it's controlled by a tide gate or so at the downstream end prior to discharging into the Atlantic Ocean. Look close, more closely at the DEP regs, and it talks about the tidal flood hazard areas as opposed to tidally tidal, tidal water bodies. So while my, the report, I would agree, it's not, I would say it's not a tidal water body, but it's the side the side of the redevelopment area located in a tidal flood hazard area.
And you also could agree that with CAFRA in this redevelopment plan, that any kind of change during the years since 2004 and even 1982, when it was first planned, that things can change, and those plans can change if there's a there's a concern that, you know, any impact and any additional redevelopment can change the flooding, and it's happened. I've witnessed.
No, no, ask questions. Keep going with your question. Don't tell me what you've witnessed.
So this can change. I mean, you can negotiate a new plan because of this flooding. It's a problem.
That's why we, that's why CAFRA permit requires the, all applicants for development to submit plans to them for compliance with the CAFRA permit and regulations. So DEP does look at that, does look at that information on their end and provide comments based upon that.
Right, so your analysis of the capacity of the sewer, the stormwater runoff is correct, but your analysis that there is missing a culvert that used to dump into the ocean actually errors when you're trying to determine the flood capability of the lake.
As I said, I'm not aware of that discharge to the ocean that was there. The plans and the information I have shows the discharge is going to the lake, and that's how I have to analyze it.
Thank you. I think you've answered, or not, my questions.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. And the next person is Ernest McNally. Go ahead and speak.
Yeah, Ernest McNally, 400 Deal Lake Drive. I guess you're probably aware of the planner rather than the site engineer. I live by Deal Lake, which is connected to Sunset Lake, and of course Wesley Lake, and right now I'm sitting, I guess you're not aware, but I'm sitting right at the corner of Heck and Cookman during this whole meeting. And are you aware that at the corner of Heck and Cookman, five streets have a downslope where they all meet at the corner of Heck and Cookman and proceed down to Lake? Are you aware of that? In other words, if you sit right where I am.
Let him answer.
Okay, okay. You know, Jack, do me a favor. Don't interrupt me.
You asked the question. Let him answer the question. Let him answer the question. You didn't give him a chance to answer. Answer the question.
Based on the survey that we prepared for the site, the information that was provided in terms of the grades, I was, I'm able to see that, and also available mapping that I have from, from, from other sources of the waterfront, that the intersection here, the the slope of the roadways comes down to this intersection and then travels along Heck towards Lake Street. For Lake Avenue, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. McNally.
So, so you are aware that the corner of Cookman, right where the, what you're considering the open space, the public space area, which I'm looking at right now, that that's where, that's where all these developments and all this impervious surface and your site, which will become mostly impervious, are you aware that they all meet at the corner of Cookman and Heck? And are you aware that, I'm not right now talking about where it goes, but are you aware that that's the gathering point, for starters?
I'm aware that water drains along the roadways down towards that intersection based upon the presence of inlets that are in that intersection.
Okay, and did you state that you really haven't been here during a storm? Like, I think the other day, we had three, four inches of rain, and you needed a rowboat to get through this intersection. But you stated that you really haven't been there during these times, correct?
I have not, the times I've been there at rain events, I have not seen any flooding that has occurred in the roadways.
Have you ever been here in a three-plus-inch rainstorm?
I have not seen any flooding within the roadways in the times I've been there during rain events.
Okay, but that's not my question. Have you ever been here during a three-plus-inch rainstorm, which happens a lot here? I mean, there's times, are you aware that sometimes the rain in the road is three inches on the higher elevation of Cookman, coming this way? And some of the benches on the sidewalk flood and float down the street to this collection point? And all I'm saying is, have you ever been here during an event, not just any rain event, during a heavy rain event? And, and I'm not talking about wind now, just heavy rain, three-plus inches, which we often get. And that's not a nor'easter. That's just a heavy rain event.
I, I
Have you ever stood at this intersection, since you're the site planner, and everybody's asking you questions about this water and where it's going? So you have not answered the question, okay. You stated that you have a DEP application for approval for the site, and it feeds off the 2004 CAFRA and major site development plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay, how many years old is that? 16?
Yes.
Has anything changed at the corner of Cookman? Heck, Asbury? What did I forget? What's behind me? Kingsley. Has anything changed there? That would affect water?
I was not driving, I don't know what the conditions were in 2004 during when the
Okay, well, I do. Are you aware that there's been major development here of density? Both high and density. I'm sitting at this corner. Are you aware that a lot of the developments, like the Monroe, Wesley Grove, are built right to the curb? They're built right to the curb. And they're dense. I mean, dense with units, dense with sewage, dense with, the whole lots as they've been are you aware that the whole lot, just do me a favor, Mr. Serpico. Are you aware, are you aware, are you aware, are you aware, sir?
Ask the question.
Mr. McNally, you've been muted.
You can let him back in as long as he asks questions.
Okay, Mr. McNally, you've been unmuted. Please ask a direct question.
Okay, Mr. Site Engineer. Are you aware that sites around your site, which is about 190,000 square feet, correct? Your site?
The entire property is 190. Our development is, is less than that.
How much less?
Our development is a little over two acres, or 85, 86,000 square feet.
Okay, so almost half of the property, when you develop it, that's the question, will become impervious. Is that correct?
78%, 78% of the two acres will be impervious surfaces. So that's less than half of the
Do you
Less than half of the whole development.
Okay, do you believe that that could seriously just disturb what's already a perfect storm flood area here?
My testimony was that I did, the analysis I performed was that the
Okay, okay, all right, okay, okay. You don't, you don't, you don't think, you don't think that it would be an impact, right?
That's my, that was my conclusion of my report.
I understand that. Okay. Now, I'm looking at the southwest corner, your donation to the city of the, what you call the public park area. Correct? At the corner of Heck and Cookman?
I'm not looking at it. What's your question?
No, no, I'm, okay, I'm sitting here looking at, you're aware of where I'm talking about, right? The south
Yes.
The southwest triangle part of one of your parcels, correct?
Yes.
And, and what you're proposing, short of, based on the acres that you have, you're asking for giving the city 6,000 feet, square feet, but it's required to have 15,000 square feet, but you're asking the city for a, I guess it's a variance. Is that correct?
We testified this at length, and you asked these questions at the
Okay, well, I'm asking again. I'm asking again. Are you asking for a variance from a 15?
He doesn't have to answer the same questions over and over.
I answered previously, and Mr. Hughes testified as well to the the justification for the lot area.
Okay, so now you submitted the application to DEP. When was that submitted?
I testified, end of February, beginning of March.
Of this year?
Yes.
Do you know, is there an estimated time?
No.
I mean, you've done this a lot. Could it take? Okay, let me ask you this. Could you proceed with any approvals relative to water and DEP without that report?
We can proceed with all, we can proceed with all applications and receive all approvals. And upon receipt of their comments, if anything changed from what we received, you know, potentially plans would have to be revised, but we can proceed with, we can proceed with everything. It's there just one of the approvals we have to obtain as part of this application.
So if you don't have the DEP and you get the approvals, can you proceed and start to build?
No, that is a condition of approval.
Okay, so you can't build until you have that DEP in hand?
Correct.
Okay, do you believe that, okay, you already answered that part. Do you believe that an updated, an updated condition on all sides of this triangle would be prudent? Because, and here's my question, could it be conceivable as a civil site developer engineer that if you got the approvals, for some reason, based on a 16-year-old report that is much challenged since then with density, but let's, let's forget that part. If you got all the approvals and you went ahead and built this, and then it exacerbated the flooding here so bad that it damaged the buildings, in your opinion, who would be responsible for that damage to the city structure, to the lake, maybe overflow to the ocean with pollution, maybe flooding? I'm at the south end of Wesley Grove right now. You know why they put the sales office there, because that floods. They can't sell that as a unit. I mean, it's obvious. There it is, Ocean Club Sales Office. There it is, Ocean Club Sales Office at the, at the east-west.
Ernest, you're testifying.
Okay. Okay, so are you, are you aware that they placed the sales office across the street from your property on this five-street, uh, uh, dump area of water that they made the sales office because they couldn't sell it as a unit? Are you aware of it?
Ernest.
Okay, okay.
I don't know anything about that.
Irrelevant.
Oh my. Oh my. Have you ever seen the sales office on this, on this five-corner intersection at Wesley Grove that says Ocean Club Sales Office in it?
It's an irrelevant question to his testimony.
That was not part of my testimony.
Has nothing to do with him as an engineer.
Question.
I'm jacked.
Sustained.
Grove guy goes, the Wesley Grove guy could go on for 45 minutes and, and.
Mr. Magnoli, you've been muted. Please ask a direct question related to Mr. Delaney's testimony only. Go ahead.
Are you aware that it, well, no. Could it? Could your development, should it go up as proposed? Could it conceivably, based on your 100-year and your 25-year flood studies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Could it, could it, could it ever have a cata- catastrophic effect by flood? Could it?
I can't, I can't, I can't answer that question because I can't predict.
Okay, 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 okay. All right. As a site developer, wouldn't it be prudent for the city for you to explore that possibility?
That's why you have the board engineer and DEP review the applications to make sure that, that it's not causing any, uh, any undesired, unwanted, uh, impacts around the area.
But, okay, but you, you already agreed, or my question to you is, it is a six, a 16-year-old, old permit and conditions have changed? Didn't, did you test?
And the DEP reviews the permit based upon other regulations and how they interpret it and they do look at, um, more recent conditions in their analysis.
So as part of your submission to DEP, did you include the Monroe, Wesley Grove? The, uh, I don't know, I'm looking around here. There's a lot of development here. Did you include that to say that, listen, in 2016, this wasn't here, but now it's here? Was that part of, or that's not your, you don't have to do that?
My analysis was concerned with the impacts my, of my development in relation to the, the approval that CAFRA granted in 2004, the intensity of development that was, uh, approved for this particular site, analyzing our site versus that and how it relates to the existing infrastructure that has been installed. Similarly, the other developments surrounding it would have done a similar thing. They were approved for a certain intensity of development and they would have been guided against those regulations as part of the CAFRA compliance review.
You're aware that there are other vacant lots right at this five-corner intersection?
I am, and they would, they were, as part of the CAFRA permit, if they were proposed for development, they would have been included in the overall design at that time. And, and therefore, the numbers I am looking at, was looking at as part of that approval would have accounted for development on those properties.
So the ones on this corner with the surfboard, are they I-Star properties?
I'm not, I, I do not know the, the, all of the intricate properties that the master redeveloper owns throughout the waterfront.
Is I-Star the master redeveloper?
This application has been submitted by a subsequent developer, AP Triangle.
Is that a division of I-Star?
That is an affiliated entity, but the master developer is a separate and distinct entity from the subsequent developer, which is the subject of this application.
Okay, but, but I was asking the civil engineer if, in fact, what he's doing at this property, that was going to be my question, m- might he also do it at the two other properties I'm looking at that are master developer properties? In other words, if this one gets approved, why wouldn't you do the one that I'm looking at, 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 um, Asbury and Cookman and the one at Heck and Cookman? They're also vacant lots of the master developer. So my question is, i- is, is there a long-term plan of just how much water from impermeability that's going to be created here?
That, that was, sorry, 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 finished.
No, okay. So, i- i- in other words, I would think it's incumbent and required of a civil engineer to not just say, "conditions today," even though you, you said that it's a 2004 permit, 16 years have gone by, there's a lot more density here and impermeability, but, but then you, as the civil engineer for the other properties, w- wouldn't you be incumbent upon you to say, "Look, we're going to be doing these other properties too." And at what point can this area tolerate any more water? I mean, that's my question. Do you think it could take endless density, impermeability, based on these lots, continuing at this rate? I mean, where's, where's this water going to go? Not going to evaporate?
Mr. Magnoli, the CAFRA permit that was approved back in 2004 had proposed a development intensity throughout the entire waterfront area. That intensity varied in previous coverage, but for the most part, I think on an average, it was, it was approved at a 90% impervious coverage and 10%, uh, sorry, 90% impervious and 10% pervious. And those guidelines are, are, those approvals and intensities are guiding development on a, a block-by-block, lot-by-lot basis throughout the remainder of the waterfront during current times. So as, as an engineer, it's my responsibility to understand what was, what was permitted to be approved on the site. Um, what was the intensity was developed at that site, compare that intensity to what we're proposing now using current regulations and then analyze all, all kinds of factors, including stormwater runoff down, from the site into the network.
Okay. Let me ask it another way. We're talking 180,000 square foot lot. Right now, I'm looking right at it. It's all permeable. It's like a rain garden here. You know what a rain garden is, right? It sucks up water. Right? And as a matter of fact, I don't go past the fence around it, but I see people go in there and they sink in two, three inches of mush.
What's the question?
Okay, the question is, are you aware that this is, this triangle property, 180,000 square feet, impermeable right now, is waterlogged?
I am, I'm not aware of that. I do, I am also aware that the site used to have, um, roadways.
Uh, 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 I, I don't care what it used to have, but you're, you're not aware that it's waterlogged right now? That's okay, you answered the question. Uh, are you aware that the property that you're talking about, you installed already on what you're claiming you're going to be giving to the city? You already have, uh, I, I forget what the gentleman from the lake referred to it as, but you already have all this water-catching stuff and, and dunes to try and absorb all that water that's rushing to the south.
You're testifying.
Are you aware, are you aware that your master developer has installed already water-catching devices, green devices at the, what's going to be considered the public park area? I'm looking at them right now. Trees, dunes, uh, that tall grass because your lot slopes right down to this. So, all the permeable property, the water is flooding it.
You're testifying.
Uh, are you aware it's draining to that park? That little thing right now that exists, it's very tiny.
A, it's not a park yet. And B, what relevance is it if the site's going to be developed? And all that's going to change? So the question's irrelevant.
Hey, Mr. Magnoli, go ahead. Do you have another question?
Yeah. Actually, I have the question. So, right now, the, um, this little tip triangle, is that where the proposed 6,000 square foot public area is going to be?
Yes.
It is, okay. And, and have you seen what's, what's there right now? Because I, I don't understand. If you're telling me that's going to be the public area, does that mean you're going to take out all that rain and water-catching greenage system? And it's just going to be a flat park?
The design hasn't been, the design of that, of that area has not been determined yet. Um, and from what I understand, or from my experience on that corner right now, it is just a landscaped area, um, you know, to, uh, to provide some curb appeal at the intersection.
To, to provide some what?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not aware of any stormwater, um, design or benefit, uh, that was designed for that corner.
Okay. You've been, have you been to this park? Oh, I don't know what to call it, this.
I, I have driven by the, and walked by the, uh, this landscaped area, yes.
Oh, okay, all right. So, um, and you said you never walked by, oh, you answered that. You haven't walked by here on a heavy storm. Okay. So, so there we are. So, are you aware that when you sit at these five corners where I am, that if you look east and you look north and you, yes, if you look north and east, that the roads and your property all severely drain or slope much more than 2% to this intersection? In other words.
Said that. He talked, the 2% had to do with the sidewalk up on the other side going towards Asbury Avenue. Your question's way out of line. It's irrelevant. It's, it's meaningless.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Civil Engineer, are you aware that your property slopes to the five-corner intersection?
My, my, the property slopes in three directions. To the intersection, the, the intersection that flows towards As, uh, Asbury Avenue and also flows towards Cookman and heads, and heads east. And that information is contained within the stormwater report at the existing drainage area map at the end of the, end of the report.
Okay, I, I, I'll, I'm right here, you're right. From the north, Asbury, it slopes down to this area, correct? From the east, it slopes.
What is your question, Mr. Magnoli? What is your question, Mr. Magnoli?
Okay, so you're aware that from sitting at this five-corner intersection, if you look at your property facing east and north, everything, streets and your property, all slope towards this intersection?
He's already answered that question three times for you.
Not all, not all of it, no. There are high points in the road, which just, and high points in the site, which direct flow in different directions, both the north, south, and east.
Okay. Okay. And, uh, can you tell me where the, uh, now, now, you talked about quantity and quality of water dispersment. Now, let's realize if over 100,000 square feet of this becomes impermeable, there's going to be a lot of water to displace. You also, uh, and I'm test, oh, wait, how do I?
You're characterizing his testimony.
No, excuse me, okay, okay.
Correct, this was already asked and answered.
Are you? Is this property EPA cleared? Meaning, there were buildings torn down here and there's, there's a lot of dirt here and there's a lot of rubble from the buildings, et cetera, et cetera, and it's all been covered over with sod. But are you aware that when, when you put the impermeable on a lot of this, the, the water, not only from these storms hitting the ground, it's going to hit the impermeable buildings and asphalt and sidewalks, and it's going to go into this other area of your land that's not, that's still permeable? And that's going to carry away a lot of that pollution? And we've talked about where all this water is going. Going into the Wesley Lake, it's going into the Atlantic Ocean.
So what is your question, Mr. Magnoli?
So my question is, are you aware?
Number two, nobody's talking about, nobody's mentioned anything about the site being contaminated. You're bringing that up. It's way beyond the scope of his direct t- testimony. It's got nothing to do with this witness.
Mr. Magnoli, I'm going to unmute you. Do you have another further question for the witness?
Yeah, I do. This, are you, as, as an expert witness, did you ever testify that the, that the land was contaminated and you had to put a four-foot per, uh, impermeable, oh, no, sod on it to be able to build on it? Did you testify to that?
As part of the testimony, the subdivision application at the last hearing, I provided testimony regarding the environmental, uh, issues on the site. The, the board asked questions, the public asked questions, and I have not testified further to that because the issue was closed.
Well, but did, what was the remedy that you said would allow you to build on it? What did you have to do?
That was, that was, Mr. Magnoli, that was all discussed during the subdivision.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, no.
That's not part of the testimony tonight. So you can't ask the question about that, that was, that was discussed tonight.
Objection, yes.
Sustained.
Mr. Magnoli, do you have another question?
Yeah. No. I have the same question and, and stop doing that to me. I feel pressured. So.
There was no discussion of contamination.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. We, excuse me? Wait a minute. You just allowed someone for 40, 50 minutes to go on.
Because the questions were relevant. Because the questions were relevant, you're asking questions that are not relevant.
They don't have to argue with the witness. Mute him, he's out of order.
Mr. Magnoli, I am going to unmute you if you do not allow the board attorney and the board chairman to speak. Please do not speak over them. Let's try this again. Do you have another direct, relevant question for this witness?
Tonight's testimony.
Oh, I, somebody just said only on tonight's testimony.
Correct. He's on cross-examination. You can't ask him questions.
I don't, I don't know.
You cannot ask him questions beyond the scope of his testimony this evening. He testified at a prior meeting. He was already subject to cross-examination on that. We don't go backwards.
Mr. Magnoli, do you understand and do you have another question?
No, I, I don't understand. I thought the board chairman runs this.
No, I'm sorry. I've un, I'm, I'm un, I'm muting you again. We've explained this numerous times. It has to be directly related to Mr. Delaney's testimony this evening. Do you have another question?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Civil Engineer. Will I, will I have a chance, uh, based on your testimony tonight, to comment on it?
Yes. This is Mr. Lambert, this is Rick Lambert. At the end of the, all the presentations, there will be public comment on all aspects of the application, the subdivision and the site plan. But that's at the end of, the end of all the presentations. Tonight is just questioning the testimony that was given.
Mr. Magnoli, do you understand?
Well, no, no, well, I just.
Are you done with your questions for this evening?
I have a question, Mr. Lambert. You just said that at the end of all the application parts and all the professionals, you get to comment.
Yes, you do.
Right, and I said that, I said that at last meeting as well. Public comment will be, is, is reserved for the end of the me, the end of the application presentation, when, when they've done all their present, when all the presenters have given their testimony, when the board has had the opportunity to question them, when the board, uh, professionals have had their opportunity to question them, and when the public has had their opportunity to question them. Once that's all completed, then it's open for public comment.
So if, if, are there a lot of components to the applications and?
There are, there are, there are two more witnesses.
We have two more witnesses.
There are a lot of professionals that have and will, um, testify, correct?
There are two more witnesses that are going to testify.
Be a total of what, 10? Which will be what, a total of 10?
There are two, there are two more witnesses that are going to testify that will, in presentations, and there will be opportunity to question them. And then once that's all completed, there will be opportunity for public comment.
You tell me how many, can you tell me how many professionals have testified already?
No, that's irrelevant. It means, why are we answering these questions like this? It's no different than any other application. It's no different.
Very late. Do you have any questions that are relevant to this testimony from this witness right now?
Yeah, uh, can I, is it possible for me? Yeah, uh, can I, is it possible for me to, uh, Oprah the application of the DEP application that you submitted?
Yes. Oprah it. Send it to an Oprah request.
Okay. So I can Oprah it, it's public record?
Yes.
That's what yes means.
Yes.
Okay. A- as is the application.
Yes. Mr. Magnoli, the entire application and its related documents are available online right now on the city website.
The, the, the DEP application is, is on the website?
Mr. Magnoli, do you have any further questions for this witness? We have to wrap this up.
Oh, really?
Yes, it's almost eleven o'clock.
Well, you know what, I'm a concerned citizen. Is there a prob-
Do you have any direct questions for this witness?
Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we, uh, uh, table this application to a further date.
Yes. I second that.
Yeah. The date we have is July thirteenth, is that correct, Arena?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that date acceptable to you, Ms. Porter?
Yes, it is.
Can I get a motion to carry this to the next meeting date?
Without further notice?
Without further notice. The move is Mike Manzella.
Second, Yvonne Clayton.
Okay, I have a motion by Mike Manzella, a second by Yvonne Clayton. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Application carried to July thirteenth without further notice.
Do we have anything? Thank you. And I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mike Manzella.
Second, Yvonne Clayton.
Thank you, I have a motion by Mike Manzella and a second by Yvonne Clayton. Of, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, everyone, for your attendance. The next meeting will be on June fifteenth for the planning board.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.